Time is six o'clock. Today's date is March 20, 2018. I call this regular board meeting of the Weslaco ISD to order. Item number two, Establishment of a quorum. Let the record reflect that all members are present with the exception of Dr. Rivera. Item number three, Opening Prayer, Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees and staff and community and the audience, welcome. We do have a script for this, the invocation. The opening prayer will be led by Adaceli Mireles from South Palm Gardens High School, and she's our social worker.
Please bow your heads. Lord God, we thank you for being with our Weslaco ISD family always. Thank you that your presence is with us right now. Today, we give you our minds and our hearts, for we know that you, that with you, at the center, great things will result from this meeting. We pray that you will deepen our comprehension, broaden our thinking, and transform our understanding. For you are our white counselor, our perfect teacher, and our faithful friend. We pray, we wait, we trust. Thank you, Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much for that beautiful prayer. Moving on to item number four is Pledge of Allegiance, Texas pledge.
Mr. Robledo will be introducing our student who will be saying the pledge.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Well, we have two students. If they would please step up and like to introduce our two students here. We have Yolanda Yanez, who is a senior at South Palm Gardens High School. After graduation, Yolanda plans to move to New Mexico and attend the Border Patrol Academy in order to become a Border Patrol agent. In her spare time, she enjoys having movie night with her sister and spending time babysitting her nieces. Yolanda says she is very excited about graduating in May and moving forward with her life. How about a big hand for Yolanda Yanez? And if her parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized? We also have Yamalit Salinas, who is also a senior at South Palm Gardens High School and will graduate with the class of 2018 in May. She's looking forward to finishing school. After graduation, she will attend South Texas College. Yamalit wants to be a physician therapist assistant so that she can help people. When not at school, Yamalit likes staying home, taking care of her mom, watching movies, and of course, shopping. How about a big hand for Yamalit Salinas? If her parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized? Okay. All right, we get ready for the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone can please stand. All right, ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas pledge?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies. Thank you so much. Once again, thank you for assisting us with the prayer and giving us the prayer and the Texas pledge and the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you so much. Moving on to item number five, Awards and Recognitions. Dr. Canales.
Okay, for our first one, Board of Trustees, we're proud to recognize both our Public Information Department and our K West Departments. Will you please come up? Members recently traveled to Frisco, Texas to attend the Texas Schools Public Relations Association Conference. Both departments submitted entries for various photo, print, and video contests, and we are pleased to announce the results. The Public Information Department won two silver stars for Meet the Middle School flyer and a written article, and two gold stars for electronic internal newsletter and our academic school calendar. So we're proud of them. Thank you. Our K West Department won five silver stars, nine gold stars. K West also received four Best in Category gold medals for internal newsletter, K West Newsletter hashtag news chat. Our logo, Weslaco ISD, the right choice, and the news package, Weslaco's Water Tower tradition. We are also proud to announce that the marketing campaign, The Right Choice for our school district, not only received a gold medal, but a crystal certificate of merit as well. This campaign was launched last spring. It included print ads, billboards, social media, online advertisements, movie theater banners, radio and TV spots. So K West is under the direction of Mr. Carlos Robledo and Public Information, Ms. Mindy Munoz. Congratulations, we're proud.
I think you forgot to add if their parents could please stand.
For children, if their parents are children, or the audience, or spouses.
Good job, very good job.
Very proud.
Congratulations.
And the two departments, just for information, are now collaborating. They're working together, they'll be housed together. So we're looking forward to many, many more great things.
Once again, congratulations, Carlos, to you and your team. That's a great job that y'all did, and I know it took a lot of work to get all those stars and certificates and badges, so good job. And I know we'll do some, we have some good stuff coming up, so that's, that's great. Moving on to, do we have some more?
We have some more.
Okay.
Another staff recognition, I'll go ahead and do this one as well. Board of Trustees, tonight we also want to recognize an administrator who has served our district and community for many years. Our Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education and Leadership, Mrs. Sue Peterson, was recently named the ISD Campaign Coordinator of the Year for the United Way of South Texas Organization. We thank you, Mrs. Peterson, for serving this great cause and for being a leader in our great district.
I told Dr. Canales she could, she could do this, it'd be okay with me, because it gives me a chance to say thank you to the members of our school district, because we received this award because our giving went up 35 percent. And that's not me, that may be me and my secretary, San Juanita Rodriguez, coordinating visits, but it's due to the employees of this district who gave very generously to the United Way this past year. So thank you to all of them.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
Okay, for another staff recognition, this evening we want to recognize a teacher from Weslaco High School. Is she here? This faculty member was recently celebrated by the Texas Council of Teachers of English Language Arts. She is a 2018 recipient of the TSTE LA High School Teacher of the Year for the State of Texas. And her name is, I didn't announce her name, her name is Monica C. Fuentes. Thank you so much, we're inspired by you.
Thank you, thank you for making us so proud, very proud of what you've accomplished and for putting us on the map and letting everybody know that we are Weslaco. Thank you.
And for loving literacy.
We're moving on to student awards.
Okay, well, tonight, we would like to recognize our top spellers in the district. If they are here, can they please step forward? How about a big hand as they enter? We want to recognize these spellers. These students placed in the top three and took part in the regional spelling bee. Third place, District Spelling Bee winner, Jaylen Medehine. Will you just step forward when I call your name, please? We have second place winner, Adrian Alejandro. And first place, District Spelling Bee winner is Eris Cabrera. Sponsors are Delilah Inojosa and Rosalba Garcia. If they're here, can they please stand and be recognized? And we also want to recognize their parents. If their parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized? Congratulations, students. Thank you very much.
Thank you, congratulations. I want to congratulate the parents on that. I mean, I know they had to do some homework and keeping these kids, getting them to the point where they're at. I know that a lot of work, a lot of hours, and thank you so much for, for working with our kids. Thank you.
All right, well, tonight we'd also like to recognize some students who took part in the Battle of the Books from the two high schools. And the winners, come on in, girls. I know there's another member of your team who's not here, but the winning team was from Weslaco East High School, and the team competed in the regional Battle of the Books competition and tied for third place. Team members, if you could please step forward when I say your name. We have Gloria Acehueda, not here, okay. Analisa Salinas, who is also the captain. Their sponsor is Renee Dyer, if she's here, can she please stand and be recognized? And if their parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized, parents? Congratulations, students, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Again, a lot of hard work and sponsors and parents, thank you for, for putting in the time on that.
All right, tonight we also want to recognize a special group of talented musicians who qualified to advance to the UIL Texas State Solo and Ensemble Contest. Let's bring up the band students from Weslaco East High School.
I'll do the cue.
Cue?
Coach.
Come on in, come on in, plenty of room. If not, we'll kick some people out.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot.
They just keep coming. That's why I was, there is no cue. Okay, here we go, no problem. Okay, students, as I say your name, can you please wave so you can be recognized and we can give you a certificate, okay? We're going to start off with Alyssa Aguilar. Desiree Alanis. Leana Alcantar. Alexis Anguiano. Sidney Caballero. Ernest Casas. Ernest here, okay. Dante De La Garza. Ray Lynn Delgado. Caroline Espinoza. Jose Garcia. Daniel Gomez. Georgie Gonzalez. Arlette Grimaldo. Alyssa Hernandez. Ilian Lopez. Alexandra Mejia. Victoria Mena. Carlos Molina. Valerie Montamayor. Michaela Moreno. Jasmine Peña. Andrea Perez. Miles Peinado. Jerry Reyes. Lori Rodriguez. Got about five more to go here. Jackie Salas. Jose Valdez. Maria Villanueva. Vianey Ibarra. And Tiffany Sambrano. Sambrano, sorry. If their parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized, parents? Congratulations once again, Weslaco East. All right. So once again, I'd like to recognize the Weslaco East Band. Moving on to the UIL Texas State Solo and Ensemble Contest, congratulations.
Hi, Sydney, I love you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to all of you. Good job.
Hi, how are you?
Big, big group.
I also want to recognize their band director, Armando Cuellar. All right, we'd also like to recognize the Weslaco High School Band, if they can please come out and be recognized for their achievements. Once again, we are recognizing these band members who advanced to the UIL Texas State Solo and Ensemble Contest. All right, so students, as I say your name, if you can please raise your hand so we could recognize you and give you a certificate. I'd like to start off with Ian Amaya. Joseph Cardona. Ryan Cuellar. Joshua De Ojos. Elijah De La Rosa. Ariel Durham. Ephraim Garcia. Tiana Guerra. Priscilla Onorato. Ricardo Ibarra. Adam Lopez. Emmanuel Lopez. Brian Low. Daniel Martinez. Abraham Mireles. Mark Morin. Esteban Nunez. Matthew Ochoa. Luis Ortiz. Erin Peña. Rolando Roman. Gabriela Sines. And Steven Vallejo. If their parents are here or relatives and they're in the audience, can they please Congratulations, students, congratulations. Oh, I'd also like to recognize our band director, Rodrigo Lial, Mr. Lial. Thank you, students, congratulations.
Good job, guys, good job. Very proud of all of you.
Good job, guys.
Good job, guys.
We'd also, tonight, would like to recognize someone who is part of the orchestra. Joshua De Ojos.
All right.
Qualified to advance to the Orchestra UIL Texas State Solo and Ensemble Contest. Congratulations, Mr. De Ojos. If his parents are here or any relatives, can they please stand and be recognized?
Congratulations. I believe music is in the family, or the family in music. So, good job.
Okay, now we want to recognize some choir members. If they can please come out and be recognized. Tonight, we want to recognize our special group of talented singers who have qualified to advance to the UIL Texas State Solo and Ensemble Contest from Weslaco High School. From Weslaco East High School. All right, as I say your name, you all have been here before, right? If you could please wave to be recognized. Let's start off with Amanda Cabrera. Victoria Corona. Priscilla Duran. Evelyn Gonzalez. Zoe Gonzalez. Leslie Guevara. Kevin Lu, not here. How'd I know that? Susana Maldonado. Iliana Oliva. Analisa Salinas. And not here, but Tabitha Vega. How about a big hand for our students? And if their parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized, parents? And they are under the direction of Mr. Jeffrey Figueroa. Congratulations, girls, congratulations.
Thank you, ladies, and congratulations. Job well done.
All right, we'd also like to recognize our choir students from Weslaco High School. They can please be recognized as they walk into the room. If you can please wave when we say your name. Mary Ann Bosida, she's not here. Ashley Cantú. Julissa Rodriguez. And Celeste Vázquez. If their parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized, parents? Thank you very much, congratulations.
Thank you, ladies, congratulations.
Awesome, good job.
We do have one proclamation, but that's it for awards.
That's it for the awards? It's always a pleasure to sit here and enjoy the awards and all the outstanding work that our kids do.
Choir director from Weslaco High School, Mr. Aguilar.
Mr. Aguilar, our choir director.
There he is.
Congratulations, Mr. Aguilar, thank you so much. Moving on to proclamation for celebrate the April...
The arts. Celebrate the arts.
Celebrate the arts, April 7, 2018. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, we're starting something new. We have a first-ever annual Fine Arts Fiesta coming up this year, and we have a proclamation that we'd like to, to announce.
Yes.
As we launch this new initiative.
Okay, Mr. Biset, if you can step forward, please, our Fine Arts Coordinator.
Is there anybody else here with the arts? No. They all left.
All right, so let me read this proclamation. Whereas art is a vital part of our lives and the study of performance and appreciation of the fine arts are important to our social, cultural, historical, and educational development, and whereas the Weslaco Independent School District consistently supports the arts and strives to create an understanding and appreciation for the value of art in the home, school, community, and the world, whereas the pursuit of fine arts, whether it be through study, creating, composing, listening, performing, or participation, enriches our lives, Erasmo López, President of the Weslaco Independent School District, does hereby proclaim and celebrate the Arts Day on April 7, 2018.
Being that it's the first year, I know we have a lot to look forward to, so it'll be great. We'll enjoy the... We'll enjoy the performances, the music, and everything you have to bring to us, and the whole community, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number seven, public comments. We had one person that signed up. Mr. Scott Frampton, sorry. I'm gonna read something to you before you start, and then you can go. You are to address only matters that concern the school district. You are not to attack any district employee or board member. We will not tolerate any disruptive behavior by any member of the audience. If you do not abide, you will be directed to cease and leave the meeting. Mr. Frampton, your name and your address, and then you can go ahead. You'll have five minutes.
Scott Frampton, 602 North Victoria, Donna, Texas. I'm here on behalf of the students and their learning success, and I believe the board is getting ready to vote on a decision where the public is allowed to use the school grounds and the elementary, well, it may, I don't know how the whole decision, the whole ramifications of it, but I believe it would be the school, be able to use the school grounds after school on the weekends, and I'm asking for, on behalf of the students of Westlaco ISD, if y'all could reconsider your decision to go forward with this because of the ramifications of what could happen of having open public on school grounds, and I've seen it firsthand, and I know we have the fences that help protect our schools from, you have to remember, we know that there's good public, but there's also bad public, and anything goes with the public, and you've seen parks and what happens at parks, and like I said, I've seen it firsthand, I've seen, you name it, it happens at the schools, the graffiti, the damage, the theft that can take place, the liability, and you know as well as I know that the public is not going to be watched, they can climb fences, they can break windows, they can do things behind places, they can, there's no guarding this, and I'm asking that you reconsider this and be bold and say, we don't need to do this, there's other measures we can do if it's about having a cover for, like a canopy for people, if that's the reason, or if you need space, I believe the parks, they still have plenty of space, I believe, where they can build additional sections to their park, and also, if they want to build their own canopies, but when you put the public in what the school was designed for, the students, and when you put the public there, you're gonna raise all kinds of problems, and not only that, the programs that are conducted by the schools, and especially the physical education departments, where they have to take the burden of the public, there's a lot of these, I know, I heard it was like two schools, but I'm sure it may progress to all the schools, I don't know, I don't know all the ins and outs of it, but there may come up, understand, these programs, not only the physical education department, but they have to bear the brunt of all the problems that result from the public, and like I said, I've seen it firsthand, when you didn't have the fences, and I've seen the public come in, but they weren't invited, but when you invite the public, you don't know who you'll get, you could have the, like you have the nicest neighbor, but you could have also the meanest person, and you know a lot of the ramifications of what can take place, and I just told you a few, I believe it's in best interest of the students of Westlaco and also the families of Westlaco, that you rescind your future decision on this project, because the sacrifice that you make is, will be worth it if you rescind this decision, because it's for the best interest of the students, and the problems that result from ruining or hurting the equipment, there's a lot of the schools, they have equipment, and it's delocated, and it'll be destroyed, there's no way you can watch it, delocated equipment that, you know what could happen to the public, not only that, the liability and everything, and so the students, and the cleanup every day after they use the, the public uses the facilities, and you're gonna have major problems, and I think it'll be a big mess, I think you have a better way to do it, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Coach. Moving on to item number eight, superintendent's report, Dr. Gonzalez.
Board of Trustees, we have several presentations today, we're gonna get started with our Fine Arts. We've received, you know, questions and comments about Fine Arts, enriching Fine Arts, so we have a presentation by our Fine Arts Coordinator on what currently exists and plans for the future that we'd like to share with you and our public. Mr. Bisset.
Thank you. Dr. Gonzalez, thank you, Mr. Lopez, board members, thank you for this opportunity to stand before you this evening and tell you a little bit about what's going on in our Fine Arts. How do we get it on the main screen? Okay. There we go. Okay. I wanted, I would like you to take a look at your monitors for just a brief video. And I need to go to the... Okay, here we go. Okay, here we go. Technical difficulties are taken care of. Please watch your monitors for a brief video. And I want to thank K. West for helping me put that together. That featured students from our Westlaco Independent School District. Our mission statement, when the Fine Arts. At Westlaco ISD, we empower students to reach their full potential through a solid, well-rounded education. This includes a strong foundation in the Fine Arts. We offer a comprehensive Fine Arts program that includes award-winning music, dance, theater, and visual art programs from 6th through 12th grade. We also have elementary music and visual art programs, kindergarten through 5th grade. Studies show that students involved in the arts tend to be better performers in school. Our students consistently earn distinction at both local and statewide events. We take pride in placing our students onstage, putting them in the spotlight as they develop their creative talents for a bright and successful future. The Fine Arts. The Fine Arts are divided into four disciplines: music, dance, theater arts, and visual arts. I'm not gonna read each one under each category, but you can see which disciplines involve which music ensembles and which other Fine Arts disciplines. They're all under the Fine Arts umbrella. One of the first things that I did when I came on board about nine, 10 months ago was I did a program assessment for our Fine Arts programs. I went through staffing needs, our budget needs, and one of the instruments that I used was called a Secondary Fine Arts Census, and what I did was, and this takes place on the first Monday of October, and I will do this every year, and in doing so, I will see tendencies in enrollment and tendencies, and see where we need to focus our attention on things. You can see, this is just the first year, this is our baseline, so to speak, and from here, I'll do the same thing again in October, and we'll see which programs are growing and where we need to focus our attention. Some of our initiatives that we've done this year. We started the Westlaco ISD Instrument Bank. Currently, we have eight instruments in our bank, they are all being used by 6th grade students, which, if they did not have those instruments, would not be able to participate in band or orchestra. Very proud of that. We are scheduling a drive in May, focusing on seniors that are graduating who may want to donate their instruments to the bank, and hopefully we can double our deposits for next year and help even more of our students in need. Another initiative that we did this year was our Christmas Tree Forest. This was housed at the Performing Arts Center lobby. We had 17 trees, the ornaments and decorations were all created by our art students in the district, they were based on our WISD theme, Lit for Literacy. They were based on Christmas novels, stories, poems, and articles. They were visited by thousands during the holiday season. The trees were purchased through the Fine Arts budget and donations from local businesses. I want to thank Mr. Gonzalez for helping us out with that back in December. What that does is it helps us create arts advocacy in our community, and in the future, what I would like to see, I'd like to add 13 more trees next year to make it an even 30, and also add a wreath division to hang on the walls, and make it a contest, and have the winning campus get an art grant. The next thing that we did this year was an all-city middle school band. The all-city middle school band was comprised of 78 Westlaco Middle School Band students. Auditions were held back in November, and they attended a clinic and gave a concert in January. This was a great experience for all the students involved, and I did have the honor of being the clinician and conductor for this first year, and we're planning on doing this again next year as well. Next thing that we started this year was our Fine Arts Encore, our newsletter. I believe you all should be getting a copy of that every time it comes out. It's to promote arts advocacy in the community of Westlaco, acknowledge the successes of our WISD art students. I do put these on display at the Chamber of Commerce and the Westlaco EDC as well. And we do participate in the Alfresco Celebration on the, I believe, the third Thursday of every month. We collaborated with the Westlaco EDC to have our students perform each month at this downtown event. In the future, they have given us permission to have our own stage there, and we would be able to even feature more of our students. We would just have to provide the staging, the lights, and the sound, but their main stage would be on one end of Texas, and our WISD stage would be on the other end, and we could have more of our students performing, and we are looking into the possibilities of getting all that equipment so that we can do this next year. And here's our Fine Arts Fiesta. This is something that I'm very proud about. I want to take this opportunity to just invite each of you. It's gonna be a great event, a great time for everyone who comes. We were going to have multiple venues, which are gonna feature performing arts students, along with an art competition and exhibit. Over 40 performances are already scheduled for Friday night, the 6th, and Saturday, the 7th, which is Celebrate the Arts Day. We will have poetry readings, we are going to have an instrument petting zoo, so if you ever played an instrument and you want to come and try it out again, we'll have an instrument there for you to try. We are going to have a drum circle jam session area, where if you ever felt like you are, your inner drummer needs to come out, you can go, our two percussion instructors for the district will be there to help lead those jam sessions. And we'll also be having an instrument information booth set up by all of our WISD groups and organizations who want to pass out information about their groups. Like I said, the dates are April 6th and 7th. Opening ceremony will be Friday, April 6th, at 5:30 at the Performing Arts Center. We would love to have each and every one of you there. It's going to be a great thing. I do believe the Westlaco High School mariachi is going to help us kick off the Fiesta that evening, and Fine Arts makes a big difference in a lot of people's lives, and this is a way for us to celebrate that in our district, because I know it's very important to each of you, and I know it's very important to our students as well. I want to share a quick story with you. A parent of a dance student spoke with me following the dance recital right before spring break, and this parent was a former student of mine, there's a lot of those in town now, but she was telling me that she keeps her daughter at Westlaco ISD because of the Fine Arts that we offer, and she works at a charter school here in town. So I am very proud, I was very proud to hear that our Fine Arts is making a difference in students' lives, and I thank you for supporting that. Future plans. Our future plans are that we want to hire one additional dance instructor to help service our dance students. That means there will be a dance instructor at Westlaco High School and its cluster, and Westlaco East High School and their cluster. We want to hire two mariachi instructors and begin a middle school mariachi and theater program. One will be for the Westlaco High cluster and one for Westlaco East cluster.
Question real quick, Mr. Bisset.
Yes, sir.
Are you gonna have full-time mariachi or just part-time?
Full-time.
Okay.
They will be teaching the part of the day at the middle schools.
Correct.
And then the other part of the day at the high schools. It would be totally their program.
Those are the calls I've been getting on mariachi.
I'm sorry?
Those are the calls I've been receiving on our mariachi program.
Yes, sir, we're working on that.
Another question, Mr. Gonzalez says, can you move the April 6th, 7th, because we're gonna be out of town?
Some of us will be out of town.
No, that's great. Next time, we'll have an opportunity to attend.
Thank you. Another thing that we're going to do next year in the future is, in our visual arts, we're going to have a contest, a district-wide contest, called Observation of a Still-Life Art Contest. You can go to, like Pigskin, and you can see the bands perform and see what they get. Well, in visual art, the painting and the sketching, you don't always get to see those students at work. This is where we put a still-life form in front of students, art students, from every campus, and they have two hours to create a piece of art, and then it's judged. And I think that is going to be a great experience for our students and for anyone who wants to go and watch that. I would also like to create an art gallery in the lobby of the Performing Arts Center. That is a big area there, and it's a great opportunity for maybe our seniors to have an art show if they're getting ready to go to college, and we'll have permanent artwork on display in our Performing Arts Center lobby. I got that idea from the Christmas Tree Forest. Also, what we'd like to do is have band night. I believe some of the other communities in the valley have this band night early September, where both high schools will debut their shows, a portion of them, they won't all be ready, Pigskin ready yet, but a portion of them, and we will also have all four middle school bands there to perform as well, and then culminate the evening with all six bands performing at the same time together. And then another thing that I want to mention briefly is something that we're working on, and I'm really excited about this, is our Summer 2018 Arts and Technology Institute for our elementary students. We are going to be offering Fine Arts this summer for our elementary students, grades kindergarten through 5th grade, and they're gonna be learning music studies, general music studies, music performance, dance, theater arts, and visual arts, and I'm really excited about that, and I'm sure you'll hear more about that in the coming days. And I just want to say thank you, thank you, it's an honor to serve in this position, thank you for your support. Fine Arts are very important. I left some other additional information for you to read about what the arts do for a student in their academics and in their lives, and I just want to say thank you, and do you have any questions?
Mr. Bisset.
Yes, sir.
Elementarys, do they have, every elementary have music at every elementary currently?
Not currently.
Okay.
In my staffing analysis or assessment, I would like to see eventually us have an art teacher and a music teacher at every elementary, and I'm working on making, I'm making that happen.
And I know the mariachi group, I know you're looking into hiring those mariachi instructors, correct?
Yes, sir.
Even though we have low numbers right now, hopefully they'll increase.
They'll increase once we get a permanent director in both positions.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Are we looking at that for this next school year?
Are we looking at, at that for this next school year, or?
They're, 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 they're in, yes. They're in, currently in the, the budget.
So we'd like to, when we go through the budget workshop, keep them in the budget and look at to launch next school year.
Okay.
With highly qualified instructors.
Right.
Good job, Mr. Bisson.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Bisson.
If you ever have any questions, I'm always available to help you.
And we're here for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Well, lots of exciting news there. I'm, I'm excited about the opportunity to put up our own stage at the Alfresco, and I think that's a great opportunity to showcase our, our kids and, uh, possibly recruit some more kids from, from other districts, other schools.
To the summer enrichment program for all enrolled students to participate in.
Very good.
For our next, uh, report, it's on safety and security department. Of course, we all have been keeping up with the news and what's going on across our country, even here in our state. So, um, Governor Abbott recently directed the Texas Education Agency to take steps to ensure that all children are safe in Texas schools. Uh, Mr. Del Rosso will lead us through, uh, this presentation.
Good evening, Mr. President, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the board. As Dr. Gonzalez mentioned, uh, the governor recently, uh, directed TEA to take several steps, uh, to ensure the safety of students in our Texas schools. Uh, I listed them for you, they are bulleted there. I'll just go through them very briefly, uh, but they are catalog and share all information from the Texas School Safety Center on school safety programs and distribute all information to school district, ensure that all public schools have completed their statutory required school safety audits and have submitted them to the school, Texas School Safety Center, ensure that all districts have a multi-hazard emergency operations plan in place, uh, ensure that all schools have conducted safety and security audits in all facilities, both instructional, non-instructional, and of course, work with the Texas School Safety Center, Texas DPS, to draft recommendations to the legislature for change to our school architecture system. So I'm proud to say that our safety and security department is in compliance with all of Governor Abbott's directives to TEA. Just briefly kind of touched on, I know back in November of seventeen, we had an extensive presentation, uh, but just some of the things that, uh, are currently going on, these are ongoing projects, uh, of course, our elementary access control projects. Uh, we are currently, uh, reviewing the bid specifications, uh, and CSP should be released by the end of the week, uh, fingers crossed there. Uh, continued training in collaboration with local and federal law enforcement agencies. We have conducted several trainings with Weslaco Police Department, with our staff, uh, so training, training, training. Uh, we did mention that, uh, in a report prior given to the board about our, uh, schools that conduct lockdown drills, all of our campuses now have conducted lockdown drills and are doing them on a consistent basis and getting better at it. Uh, possible future projects that we have, uh, for your consideration is a gate access system for all campuses, kind of like a, uh, uh, remote control gates, uh, to prevent cars from coming in. We're looking into that. Uh, the secondary access control project, which is phase two, which will be access control for the medical, middle schools, and of course, phase three for all the high schools. Um, also, school resource officer, SRO project, we're currently in the budgetary planning stages for the eighteen, nineteen school year, so you will see that coming up in the budget workshops, uh, for us to initiate an SRO, uh, project for next year. Uh, there are other options, uh, that are allowed by the state, uh, of course, the school district police officers, which is our own police department, the school marshal program, uh, designation of school employees authorized to carry firearms, also known as a guardian plan, and, uh, arming of security personnel, of course, with current police officer licenses. These are just things that we can do by the state. Obviously, we would, uh, they require much more discussion than, you know, than these four bullet points that we have here. So certainly something we could bring back in depth at a later time if the board was willing to.
How many of our security personnel currently have a peace officer license?
Right off the top of my head, I'm going to say about five or six.
Okay.
Mr. Lopez, maybe, uh, one day we can set up, maybe like workshop, if we have a special meeting or something, uh, set up a workshop where we can come maybe an hour before and we can visit some of these, uh, future possible projects.
I'll just say we'll be ready.
Definitely, ve- very, very near future. Mike, we need to set something up like, uh, Mr. Gonzalez said, and make sure that we inform the public that that's going on. And I know we, we post our meetings, but, uh, maybe a note to parents of the discuss- discussions that we're going to have in regards to school safety and possibly, you know, get their, or not possibly, but get their input on, on, on what they want and.
Certainly, we can set that up in a workshop setting.
Yeah. In addition to, one of the discussions at the last ACT meeting and at the principals' meeting was on safety and security and ideas, and even with the student advisory committee.
Yeah.
So we're also looking at patterns that are surfacing from the district advisory committee, the student advisory, and of course, we'll continue to talk to our administrators on campus.
There probably be, there probably be also some presentations at the conference in April also on safety and.
I'm sure.
On that weekend of the sixth, seventh, and eighth, Saturday and Sunday.
It's a very hot topic right now.
Also, Mike, I know that, and, and Dr. Gonzalez, I know that, uh, at the beginning of the school years, everybody's looking for present, presenters and people to do, uh, talks at, at, uh, at meetings, and that we need to make sure that, uh, that we emphasize that security is something that we, if we can get somebody to come in and, and train our staff and train our principals on safety measures and, and techniques, that, that's very important.
Yeah, for the, part, for part of the trainings for the new year, especially the Leadership Academy, we're looking at the instructional component, which we want to be strong in, and that includes academics and athletics, but also the managerial, that includes things like safety and school organization. So we started those discussions, we haven't finalized it, but we'll, we'll note that. And then Weslaco PD was here presenting to principals and staff members two weeks ago, before spring break.
Yes, right, right before spring break.
On what to do in case you are in a situation where you have somebody with a weapon in the building. And so continuing that and, and training on that, and I believe that's part of, is that part of your presentation?
No, that was just a, so just a very brief update for you, for the morgue.
Mike, one thing that I do want to say is on the, on the security part, make sure that the, the schools are all in line, uniform training for everybody, and don't get some training for, for some schools and somebody else gets somebody else to come training, because then we're going to have a whole lot of different ideas floating around. We need to be all on the same page.
Yeah, the training that we're providing is part of the standard response protocol, and then, uh, in fact, we featured that in our newsletter, uh, that we're, that's coming up here in a couple extra slides.
Okay.
And that's based from the Texas School Safety Center that we get that standardized training from.
All right.
I'm going to move on. Okay. I'll go ahead and move on to the, uh, insurance slides that we present every month. Uh, this is, of course, a, uh, cor- correlation between last year and this year, uh, between our, uh, health insurance and pharmacy benefit managers. So in claims last year at this time, uh, the district spent approximately six point four million dollars, uh, in medical claims. Uh, that is, of course, uh, that was last year. This year, the district spent approximately four point nine million dollars in medical claims. It's a difference of approximately one point three million dollars less that we spent this year so far. Uh, for the prescription drugs, uh, last year at this time, we spent, uh, one point seven million dollars versus this year's, it's actually, it's very close, it's, uh, one million six hundred eighty-two thousand five thirty-three sixty-seven versus this year's one million six hundred thousand eight ninety-five twenty-eight. It's a difference of approximately eighty-two thousand dollars less, uh, this year. As far as the, I know last month, Mr. Lopez, you asked for, uh, administrative costs in the RX program. We did send that information out in the update, but it's also included on the bottom, uh, what we pay in the admin costs for, uh, claim fees, prior authorization evaluations. Uh, it's literally, it's almost impossible to separate these, because we have roughly three thousand, uh, drugs dispensed in a month's time, and some fees do not apply to all these drugs. Uh, that's why they're included in the, uh, in, in the total fees for the, for the RX drugs. Um, but that's what we charge, and of cour- that's what they charge us, and of course, that was presented to y'all in the update. As far as the medical fixed cost, uh, this includes the, um, administration fee that we do pay Blue Cross and Blue Shield, that includes, of course, utilization review, PPO access fees, which is what they charge us to access the network, and that's thirty-eight seventy a month. Uh, specific stop loss is, which is basically our aggregate, or specific individual stop loss, uh, sixty-six fifty-nine, and of course, the aggregate is, uh, fifty-six cents per employee per month. So as you can see, the totals that we spent this year versus last year, we spent, uh, one point six million dollars, and this is approximate difference of two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars more on admin fixed costs. So overall, the plan is running, uh, one point one million dollars less this year than there were the last year for a total of eight point two million dollars.
Mike, for clarification, AHC.
American Healthcare is the pharmacy benefit manager.
So you can't separate Blue Cross and American Healthcare?
Well, they are separated.
On the fixed costs?
The fixed costs, the, 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 the fixed costs are, are not included in the medical claims, they're included in the medical fixed cost. But for the, for the drugs, it's very, very hard to separate out the fixed costs, uh, from the total. I can certainly provide the bill that we get from AHC to the board, and it's about thirty pages long, like I said, about three thousand line items.
No, only three thousand.
Okay.
Okay. But we're still under by a million and what, million what?
One million one hundred thirty-six thousand seven eighty-two.
Good job.
Mike, do you have the number of claims from last year to this year? Is it pretty comparable? I could put something together, and, uh, I don't have the number of claims with me right now, but anywhere from three to five thousand claims a month that they do, so. But I can certainly, uh, get y'all something if that's, if that's what I'm looking for.
Please put in the update.
Number of claims? Okay.
In the update.
In the update.
Sure, we'll put something together for you. Uh, the next one is our workers' compensation fund. Uh, we have our, of course, this year compared to last year. Last year, we had, uh, fifty-eight claims, up to this year, we had sixty-two. Uh, so total incurred, which is the money we have to set aside in reserves for all these claims, last year at this time was approximately a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Uh, this year, approximately eighty-five thousand dollars, so we're looking a little better. Uh, we're doing very well in our workers' compensation program.
Any idea why it's so different?
A lot of it has to do with our, uh, five oh four network that we created, uh, three, or two and a half years ago, where we basically, we have our own network where our employees can go to seek, uh, care under workers' comp, and that is allowed under section five oh four of the Labor Code that allows us to set up our separate network. So we're able to manage care a lot better, and we work with physicians that, um, that work very hard to get our employees back to work, uh, quicker and of course, healthier.
And so that's what's saving us the money?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And finally, there is our newsletter that we produced for March, and this is, of course, is, uh, first page is what to do in emergency.
Mr. Frank.
And this covers the standard, um, response protocols, which is lockout, lockdown, evacuate, shelter. The mainly things that we do that we drill on is, of course, is the, uh, lockout or lockdown drill, if you will. So that went out to all employees, just some more, uh, information on benefits, and that's my portion. If anybody else has any questions?
Mike, the newsletter goes on the website as well, right?
We email it to all the employees. Uh, we don't, we don't have it on our website. We could put it up.
Yeah, I was going to say, even if it's a, a parent and somebody in the community, just take a look at it.
Okay, we can, we can post it.
Dr. Gonzalez? How many, how many lockdowns are, are the schools required to, uh, practice during the year? Do we have a certain amount, or are we?
The state does mandate, and I'll put it in the update, uh, because right off the top of my head, I believe it's one every quarter that the state requires, but our campuses have been doing them once a month.
So repeated, the state, the state re-inquires what?
I believe one lockdown drill a quarter.
A quarter, so recommends, at least one a quarter.
Recommends, we're doing them once a month.
Okay.
We've, yeah, and we've had all campuses do them at least once.
Correct.
Good.
Well, the safety is very important, Mike, you know, of our kids and, and, uh, who's monitoring the, the lockdowns? Is that?
Safety and Security Department does.
That's, that's your department?
Mm-hmm. Falls under me, yes, sir.
Okay, and that's, uh, as far as the, the monitoring part, that's, you've got staff and enough people to take care of that?
The direction, uh, to the principals were to let us, the Safety and Security Department know at least a day before they plan to conduct a lockdown, that way we can send staff there. Mrs. Calone goes out there, uh, to monitor and evaluate, uh, the drills, and of course, to provide feedback, uh, to the staff.
Okay.
We also sent out instructions to the principals some time ago on how to prepare and how to conduct these drills.
And how are the schools doing in the evaluations?
They're doing very well, actually.
Okay, okay. Okay. Well, again, I'll emphasize the training for our staff. Uh, I think they're, they're going to be their first line of defense, come anything that's, that's bad, and, uh, any training we can get them.
Yes, sir. We're working very closely with Weslaco PD and the Sheriff's Office and Border Patrol.
Of course.
Right.
That's all I have.
Okay, for the next part of the presentation, it's on enrollment. Um, February, we were up by twenty-two. Uh, this month, the twenty-fifth week of enrollment, we're up by thirty-seven students. If you'll look at the second slide, uh, we're two hundred and thirty-three down compared to this time last year for elementary. We're still up at middle schools by almost a hundred, ninety-eight, and we're down at the high schools by sixty-seven, the alternative by nine, and we're up on the Elph Academy. Where that makes the, the, the total of thirty-seven. Uh, on the next slide, we have the average daily attendance from August twenty-eighth, twenty-seventeen to March ninth, twenty-eighteen, and that is at ninety-six point sixteen percent. Uh, order for Steve's, I'd like, we'd like to thank you, and of course, the Texas Education Agency, uh, for approving the low attendance waivers. Uh, our preliminary information is showing that the implications are to the positive to our district of two hundred and seventy thousand, so thank you for approving that, and TA has approved it, so we're set to go for those two days.
Good.
And for the last part of this presentation, we have the, uh, more information on ADA for Mr. Sanchez.
Yes, Dr. Gonzalez, Mr. Lopez, members of the board, this is the report on, uh, ADA, uh, average daily attendance, that's the one that affect the financial we get from the state. Um, you have it for you. The comparison for the weeks, the first, uh, six weeks for the current year was fifteen thousand eight hundred and fifteen, that is two hundred and forty-three less ADA than the prior year. The second six weeks was fifteen thousand nine hundred and fifteen, which is two hundred and fifty-seven less than the prior year again. Third six weeks was fifteen nine forty-seven, which is one hundred and seventy-one less than the prior year. And the last six weeks, uh, was fifteen thousand nine hundred and forty-four, which is ninety-five less than the prior year. In total, it's fifteen thousand nine hundred and five ADA, that is one hundred and ninety-two less than the prior year. Compared to budget on the bottom, the budget was sixteen thousand one hundred and seventy ADA. The fifteen thousand nine hundred and five that we have is two hundred and sixty-five less ADA than the budget. That represents one million nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars less, uh, compared to budget. So that is, uh, the, up to the, uh, third six weeks, it was, uh, two million four hundred thousand less, so we improved with the waiver and the four-six weeks attendance. And, uh, so that's, we're looking at about two million dollar less ADA receiving revenue from the state this year.
That is a lot of money. Now, this is on the ADA, which is attendance.
Attendance, right. The.
What are we doing to take care of this?
Our, well, uh, tax collections are, we're expecting to be higher than how we budgeted, so that helps with, uh, part of the money we get from the state, plus the local taxes revenue. The other one is, uh, we're enforcing the deadline and purchasing. We told the schools, any, you have to march there first to order, anything you were going to order, you don't order it, we're going to cut it, so we expect to get some, save some money from that. Also, we have some vacancies that we haven't filled on the payroll, so we have some, uh, savings on the payroll that we're not going to, that we're going to have, because we're not, we haven't done some of that.
Now, last year, last year, what did we do? We had, did we break even, or did we make some money last year?
Well, we were, we were, uh, about six ADA short, so we almost made it rock even last year on ADA.
So, we made, we lost money also?
Yes, but it was about thirty, forty thousand, something like that.
Forty thousand?
About forty thousand less, yes.
And this is two million dollars?
Yes, that's a big difference.
This is a big bunch.
Now, this includes the four, four-six weeks.
Four-six weeks. If the fifth-six weeks improves...
And the six, 'cause the, the state considers our top four six weeks, correct? Because of our migrant population.
Looking at their daily attendance, they're hitting above ninety-five percent, but it doesn't reflect on your ADA.
Right. It, that's attendance from the enrollment. The enrollment's less, it's about average three hundred less than last year. So, the report on attendance is up, the students enrolled, we have about ninety-six attendance, ninety-six percent attendance.
So, the difference isn't, I understand by number-wise, it's thirty-seven, but it's because we're only getting half for Elph?
That plays into it, the half-day funding.
Right. Yeah, the ninety-six is from the enrollment, but the enrollment is less than last year.
That's what I'm saying, but if you look at your enrollment comparison chart, you have us at plus thirty-seven.
Total attendance.
Total. But we're only getting half for Elph.
Yes, for the, for the pre-K, you're correct.
So, then it leads to our shortage.
Right.
But that's enrollment, and, and what we're loo- looking at now is, uh, the attendance, they're absent, right?
But, Canales, where are we at with, with truancy officers? Is that something that we've looked into further?
We, as part of the budgeting process, we're gonna be talking about the efforts we make for the attendance. As a matter of fact, we have a meeting scheduled for this Friday on that everyday matters. When we talked about this last month, uh, Mrs. Peterson talked about the importance of parents' understanding, how, how many instructional minutes and opportunities are missed when a decision's made to keep a child home, who doesn't need to stay home, and how we need to get that message out to parents. So, as part of this, I think we're calling it everyday matters, I don't know, we talked about something at Cabinet. We wanna strategize on getting that communication out. Who do we need to work with? Our counselors, our parent liaisons, to just send that message, because we have, you know, over seventy-five thousand, six hundred instructional minutes, and for a day, a student lose out, a lot, loses out a lot of the instructional minutes. So, it's, you know, it's about the finances and coming, so we can have the rich programs for our kids that we want, and the academics, and the athletics, and the fine arts, but it's also about the importance of learning every single day.
Yep.
And being in school. So, we need to strategize on that. We need to take a look at best practices, um, not only in the research, but in other districts that are getting better results, you know, in terms of kids actually coming to school, and then, of course, looking at the impact of, of the, you know, that half-day.
And I think it goes both ways, you know, having, um, like you say, the minutes are, are, are very limited, you know, but, you know, having, uh, school administrators, counselors, and, you know, having to spend time trying to make those phone calls and reach out to parents, you know, that takes a lot of time from, you know, what they should be, uh, doing, and, and, you know, I feel like truancy officers, you know, have, having them just, you know, take that role and, and, and take that responsibility, or some of that responsibility away from them, you know, would, would help.
And again, that, that's a good point, but again, we gotta look at an overall budget. I under, I agree, Jaime, uh, 'cause it's important that, uh, the administrators and counselors are, are overwhelmed, and I think, uh, a truant officer would help, uh, in, uh, getting those students, uh, back in class. But, again, we gotta look at the budget, uh, coming up.
And I think, I think that's a good point, you know, the budget, you know, but I think this particular position would, you know, help offset those issues with, with the budget.
Do other school districts post this type of information in their, uh, school board meetings, things like that?
I don't know if every school district does it, you know. I, I know, in my experiences being into other districts, it's talked about, you know, on attendance, enrollment, especially, when you have, uh, you know, you're in a situation where you're landlocked and there are charter schools coming in, and there's opportunities to move the two housing that may be more affordable to parents, or more to the parents' taste for them to move. Uh, so, districts that lose enrollment are probably having these discussions that are losing enrollment, and I would, then that would venture to say that it's probably more than it used to be because of what's happening just across, you know. We look at patterns across the, the region. As a matter of fact, we have a report that we're looking at very carefully that tells us how many students we lost from Westaco ISD to a charter school or to neighboring districts. Same token, we have information on those neighboring districts and the charter schools, and how many students they lost to us.
That's good.
So, that's one of the reasons, you know, later on, we're bringing up the open enrollment, because the numbers, I don't have the numbers with me, and I think there were like a one hundred and sixty-eight went to a charter school, or maybe a hundred and seventy-two, then a hundred and sixty to a nearby district, and then eighty-eight to another nearby district. So, if parents had a choice to stay, you know, probably minimizing the educational disruption that happens when you go from one campus to another, and we had open enrollment, maybe we, we could keep some of our students.
Well, the reason I ask is because, um, you know, one thing I'd like to do when I, when I, when I have a problem, so I try to identify trends, and whether they're localized trends or regionalized trends, and I'm thinking, uh, I mean, uh, our, our average rate is pretty good, ninety-six point sixteen percent average daily attendance, and I'm wondering, um, is it something to do with Westaco, or is it maybe, uh, students are staying home because we have an aggressive flu season this year, and their kids are just simply getting sick? I mean, I, what I'd like to know is, maybe if we could look into, uh, perhaps neighboring districts, if they have this similar type of information publicly available, maybe we can compare our d- average daily attendance to theirs and see, okay, is it something just Westaco ISD is having, or is Mercedes, Donna, at Calts also, are they going through?
There's pattern everywhere.
Right, it's the same pattern. And I, 'cause I've noticed that when you look at this page here, uh, and you look at last year, the average daily attendance continued to go down throughout each successive six weeks, but in ours, it actually went up, the opposite, uh, this year, and we're still down. So, I mean, it, it, I was, I was trying to put a pattern to it, and it seems like I...
That's a good point.
We can't do it based on this information.
Some of that was the Elph, wasn't it?
Does the Elph make a, uh, uh, an impact on these numbers for this year, like Mr. Patrick was talking about?
They, they're interesting enrollment, but the attendance.
But we're still down on the attendance.
So, we have the cold days, you know, we saw the patterns too, when we analyzed the data on the cold days.
Andres, again, and maybe, I was just explaining to Patrick, as you said, enrollment, because I, I see the ninety-six percent. I know we have our principals that target ninety-five and above, or ninety-six for elementary. What I'm saying is, because of our enrollment shows thirty-seven, and you said a minute ago that our ADA is based on who we have enrolled, correct?
The attendance of the students enrolled.
Of the students enrolled. So, if our enrollment is higher, and our percentage of the daily attendance is ninety-six percent, yet we're short ADA two sixty-five, is this because of the Elph?
The, if you, if you look at the current page that I have on the screen...
The two sixty-five, what I'm saying is, the two sixty-five, we have five sixty enrolled, but technically, we only get half of that five sixty.
Right, on, on the Elph, and, uh, the student that we have, the pre-K four students that we have at all elementary is going to the Elph. On those, the ADA is also half.
Is also half.
Right.
What's the enrollment, can you, for the update, just give me the enrollment of pre-K four? And I know next year, we're moving to pre-K four all day, so that will help the, the ADA, but can you just give me the number of what we have in pre-K four?
Yeah, well, we, we can put it on the update.
Please, yeah.
So, when we bu- budgeted for this year, uh, I'm assuming that you budgeted, uh, the half, right, for the Elph program?
Yes, oh, no, we, we had it budgeted like that, yes.
Andrew, you said ninety-five percent was a, a daily attendance that we're looking for? Is that correct?
What's your goal?
It's, yeah, it's, it's a ninety-five percent for the high schools, ninety-six percent for the middle schools, and ninety-seven percent for the elementary schools, ninety-seven percent at the elementary schools.
Yeah, but we also need to include, include the enrollment, so that ADA can go up.
But not in elementary, middle school, and high school?
Right, all, all, all of course.
Where you get the full ADA?
Right, yes.
Right.
Well, the data's right there.
Yeah.
So, all we have to do is, uh, look at it, see what we need to...
Jaime spoke on truancy real quick, Mr. Lopez, and I'm all for it, and I've always said we needed truancy, and, and Mr. Nieto helped a year ago and stuff, but, you know, I, I think I take it upon myself still, if, if I'm out on the road, and I'm out on the road a lot, and I had a call with Dr. Cantu, 'cause he had people at Moreno's Feast Store while I was buying feed for my son's animals, and there were students from Moscow East, or I think if anybody that drives between campus to campus, if you see students walk in, and I see them a lot, and I see them often, it's just very hard to know what schools are going to. I just kinda pick a school that they're nearby, and, and you call the administration to, maybe they can go by and pick them up and hurry them up to get them there before ten o'clock. I don't know, but I think parents, you know, some that drop them off or get on the bus, and they kinda exit our gates, you know, to wherever they do, uh, we have to do our due diligence too as community leaders. If we see it, call on it.
And a, good point there. Now, and, uh, you know, being already in March, a lot of times, uh, some of, some of the students are habitually absent, especially at the secondary level, is because they're behind in credits, and so they don't have, uh, they know they're not gonna reach their goals that particular year, because, uh, they're behind in credit, so if they're attending, whether it's a high school or, or a middle school, sometimes they, they just give up. So, that's where the counters come into play, but also, maybe sometimes those students are at the high school, sometimes if they're redirected to, say, South Palm Gardens, so they can recover those credits instead of losing, 'cause once you lose them, they don't want to attend school, then we're not getting the ADA.
Right.
All right? And that's why I believe a lot of our students that are absent a lot are some of those students. And I always speak, because what I do in Harlingen, my, my, uh, school is a recovery school, so those students that are not doing well at the, at the high schools, then they come to me and I recover them. They stay with me, and hopefully that builds, builds our ADA and our attendance.
And then they, what you're saying, then they still have some hope, because they're gonna be allowed to catch up on credits and not...
Correct.
Instead of write it off, I'm already too far behind, there's no way, so I'm not gonna go to school.
Correct.
And I'd like to add one more item. You'll remember how we were discussing the, the budget for the current, the current year. Uh, I mentioned to the board that we had about six hundred thousand dollars surplus budgeted. So, we have a surplus, we're gonna budget under, uh, instruction, function eleven. From that six hundred thousand, we still have about four hundred thousand that we haven't used. I had mentioned to the board that, uh, the schools needed some items throughout the year.
Correct.
We will work with them to provide money for that. We've been doing that, so we still have about four hundred thousand that we haven't spent, which we don't plan to either, uh, from those six hundred thousand that are budgeted, that, that we just put in function eleven, but we're not spending them. So, we still have about four hundred thousand that we haven't spent. In that spot, that's reflected in the financials, we go to the financial report, I'll mention some of that.
When, when is the two million dollar downfall gonna hit you? When is it gonna affect you?
It's for the year, by the end, by the end of the fifth, no, this year.
This year.
It's money that we're not gonna get, right. So, we, we still, uh, like I said, it's part of the six hundred thousand that we haven't spent, about four hundred. The additional taxes that we expect to collect, that additional taxes triggers more state funds, uh, what's called a tier-two funding from TA. So, we have additional funds from that, additional collection, money we're not gonna spend, vacancies that we're not, that we did not fill. So, we're hoping that we'll break even at the end, and we'll continue through, through the year.
Now, can we, you know, how, can we get Mr. Garcia's input, you know, in regards to transportation, how many of these, uh, students are, are missing the bus, um, and are we doing anything to try and maybe, uh, give them a second chance, or what, what, is there anything in place for that?
Yes, sir. Uh, as soon as these discussions start coming up, I know that I, I told my drivers to start waiting a little longer for students. I know that when I was young, that's what drivers would do for us, and, and that's why I met with them right away and told them, you know, stay a little longer, ask the other children who are boarding, you know what, uh, ask if your neighbor's gonna come, and sometimes they have, they'll say, yes, he's coming, he's doing this or that, so he's about to get ready, he's come. So, yeah, we, we, I've asked drivers to do that, and I know they, we, we've waited a little longer, they're coming in a little later, but it's because sometimes those kids just aren't ready, so we've left them behind in the past, but, and then if we get back and any, any su- any parent that calls, we make sure to go back for them, to get them to school. So, we've taken our, our, our part in, in some measures to, to get them to school.
Good, good. Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you.
Any questions? Additional questions on ADA?
So, you said, we're gonna break even or come ahead? That's what you said.
Well, we expect to break even, not to have the two million dollar loss that we're gonna have.
Okay. I'd like to know what, what our principals are doing to help the ADA. Anybody wanna add anything?
I think Mr. Butterbur can, can add a couple of things there.
Mr. Butterbur, would you like to add a couple of things?
I'm on a...
And I'm sure I can speak more than behalf, because there's enrollments and attendance far better than our campus. I think on all the campuses, between personal phone calls, we still have the system that calls out, there's home visits that are numerous, uh, incentives, we have, you know, drawings on Fridays, it's just, there's numerous that go on all the time, and it is a battle. It is a battle, you know, but I mean, it's just something that we take on and is part of our daily routine. But I think Mr. Prudry has said it, you know, if we could get some help, somebody that was helping on that end, that would be a tremendous boost, I think, for all of our campuses, from our level all the way through the high schools.
I agree. Thank you, Mr. Butterbur.
Mr. Sanchez, can you, you know, and maybe in the update, you know, uh, figure out how much shift in the ADA, the deficit, you know, uh, a truancy officer, his salary, his benefits, how much would it take? Uh, how many more students?
But they need it for, again, to justify the salary.
To justify their salary.
Correct.
Just to see what, what it would take just to justify, um, their, their benefits and salary.
Well, e- each ADA that we get is about seventy-five hundred dollars.
Right.
So, we have the officer, we, they, they get eight to ten students, for the students to come to school every day. That will help one officer.
Are truancy officers professional or paras?
Paras, professional.
Well, I, I think, I'm gonna be honest with you, 'cause I've had some parents, um, kinda joke about our truancy officers, because they're not professionals, and say, este fulano, he hasn't finished school, and here he is telling me he should be, my son or daughter should be going to school. I, I know we have some professional, and some are paras, correct? At some of the schools?
We don't have truancy officers.
Don't have truancy?
They're all paras?
We don't, we don't have truancy officers.
We don't have truancy officers right now.
Well, I know they're called differently.
Yes.
Parents specialists.
No, you're looking at, uh, attendance.
The truancy duties are assigned to an assistant principal, a CIF, who then works closely with the attendance, uh, personnel on, on staff.
'Cause I know we've hired...
So, the majority of the, uh, deficit that we have seen, Mr. Nieto, you're correct, is at the secondary, the high schools, and so we can really take a good look at the truancy officer option at the high school, because that's the biggest loss where we see. Our e- elementary, uh, principals have done a great job of maintaining those numbers, but like I said, um, we don't have truancy...
And I know, I know it's at the high school, and I know we, I know Mr. Nieto and I spoke with you, and I know Dr. Canales just came in, but, uh, we truly need a true titled truancy officer at our schools.
Okay, and we'll go ahead and give you that information, so that when we start the budget process, we can definitely look at that versus the, the loss that we've seen at those campuses and the number of student, uh, enrollment that will offset those salaries.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sure we can get some information on, on the effects of a truancy officer to a district. Uh, Hasby or somebody will have something that they can, that you can bring to this board, and that way we can...
And a, a couple of years ago, I don't know if it's three or four, uh, I'm looking at people who might know, uh, the laws changed where it came to truancy. Uh, there was a time, and I experienced it as a high school system principal, where the, uh, truancy officers and the courts looked at, um, missing out in school as a very serious matter. So, at one point in my career, I remember a student and a parent had to spend the night, uh, in jail for excessive absences, 'cause the state law is you have to attend school. That was a long time ago, and there was some, there was some, you know, some, some, some things that changed. Um, so, we'd like to examine everything, you know. When the law changed, it took a ma- maybe some conversations with the parents, like, come on, student, you don't want to have to pay a fee, we don't want your parent to have to go to court. And I'm not saying that that's the answer, 'cause it's not, but what I'm saying is, we wanna look at everything, the best practices, the research, the cost analysis, like you're asking us to, the data from the schools, the comparisons to the other schools, including charters, and see what we can come up with. But one thing is, we want our kids in school every single day. We want them learning, we want them experiencing fine arts, athletics, you know, strong academics, and all the enrichment programs we offer.
So, then as far as the, uh, we can't take them to court anymore and charge them a fine or anything like that, like they used to?
There, there are some changes. I don't know exactly what the changes are.
It's no longer, it's no longer a criminal offense.
It's not?
It's a purely civil, uh, fine now.
Oh, okay.
It's basically they pay, you have to set, you have to issue a summons, and they go to court, and they pay a fine, basically, but it's no, can't arrest them, can't, uh, send them to jail anymore.
But maybe for somebody, yeah, they need to get a fine to send their kids to school.
I said, we just get a guy, a van, and a big dog catcher net. Send them out.
People catcher net.
No, we, we want our kids in school. We, we want them.
So, Andres, you have a big challenge ahead of you.
Well, basically, basically, what we've, what we've been discussing now for about thirty minutes is the attendance. We need our kids at school, you know, uh, they need to attend, it's very important for their learning, they're very important for, for the whole system to work, you know. We, we get funded by the attendance, and, uh, and your kids learn by coming to school. So, parents, you know, whoever's watching the, this meeting, need to bring the kids, send them in, and make sure, make sure that they're coming in. Very important.
Dr. Canales?
We have one more, um, section of this report, and that is construction of facilities and budget update, uh, that was requested. Mr. Sanchez has a spreadsheet that you're gonna display, correct?
Thank you.
You're killing trees.
On the blue, light blue item, it's all the projects, and I'm gonna go back to the first page now. Okay, there. The, the light blue is all the project that we're funding from the local construction fund, or the fund balance assigned for facilities and all the needs, and the local maintenance fund. The lilac color, or, it was purple at the beginning, is the item, the project that we were funding from the maintenance tax note, for which, from which we received 17 million. The items in orange are the ones that have been approved already by the board, we have the actual cost figure. The ones in light green are the ones up to bid, the ones in the royal blue are the ones that are pending approval, which we have on the agenda for tonight. And at the bottom, and I'm gonna go back to page three, you see there on the square, the bottom, let me just save, let me go back one page. The bottom line there shows the cost. For the blue items, it's 19,742,000 on the project that were approved, that were coming from, again, a fund balance assigned for facilities and all the needs, or the construction fund. The ones on lilac is 16,789,000. We, we received 17 million for these projects.
If you, excuse me, what does the true cost symbol stand for, the A and the E?
That, that is, the orange, for all the project that we have already approved, that we have an actual amount.
Okay, and E is?
E is an estimate.
Oh, estimate, okay.
Yeah, 'cause we haven't received the proposals, or we're still considering.
I saw it's the legends at the last.
That's on the last column, sorry, I did not mention that, yes.
Thank you.
So, on the third page now, I show there on the bottom right, the fund balance at the beginning of the year was 23,292,000. We transferred from there 4,106 to the self-insurance fund, that leaves us with 19,132,000. The local construction fund at the end of February had 4,236,000, that totals 23,368,000. The facilities from which we need from the fund balance or local construction fund is 19,742,000, that leaves us with $3,626,000 for all the projects or all the needs that we have, hopefully, we don't have to use them. And from the local maintenance, I mean, the maintenance tax of the 17 million, we're using pretty much all the funds for the project that we have. We have the projects, estimates, and some additional funding in case we need additional furniture or equipment, we already made allocations for that. So, does that answer the question, Mr. Lopez, that you had? How much money was left?
This is not the rain, this does not include the rainy day.
No, we still have 17,500,000, and the fund balance that is not assigned or for anything like that.
We cannot touch.
And we don't touch that, and we'll, we'll act to increase by another half a million at the end of this year.
Andres, the 3.6 available?
Uh-huh.
Construction only?
Construction or other needs. Like, in the future, we need construction completed, we've been funding a million dollars.
But it has to be, it has to be used for construction only?
No, 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 for construction or any other need that we need.
Okay, so, if you're short $2 million in ADA, you can pull from here, if you had to.
Yes, uh-huh. We hope we don't have to, but that's the amount, uh-huh.
And we added 500,000 or half a million every year to the fund balance, correct?
Yes, for the last five years, yes. It used to be 15 million every year, every year, so, we stayed on it, half a million, yes.
Okay.
That it, okay?
And that was the last report.
Yes, that is the last item, but yes.
Could you, would I find helpful?
Yes, sir.
On the next one? This is very good, by the way, good work. If there's anything that's over budget, could you kind of highlight that in red on the next one?
Oh.
Okay.
That way, we can monitor the process, you know, what the, how it's going budget-wise.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, most, most of the projects are coming, well, the, most of them initially started coming over, over budget, like the field house, we only have 2.9. It came out to 3.1 million, or 3 million, but we had to buy the lockers still, so, we, I allocated more money for the lockers as well.
Okay, and is that reflected on, on these numbers here?
No, it, it doesn't explain, I'll prepare another report, and I'll present it to the board, for how much we started with and the actual amount that we came up with.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Sure. The fact that I gave you has some agenda items that we needed to revise, and so, that we hadn't received, like the tax collections reports, we hadn't received it, the tax adjustments are included in there, that's part of the consent, and on the other ones, I'll explain them as they come up.
Okay.
Thank you, Andres.
Yes, sir.
How soon will we see some, some dirt getting moved out there on some of our projects?
Very soon, yes.
Very soon?
Yes, on the field house, for example, when I met with Mr. Rudy Gomez last week, he got the contract signed by the contractor, and they're in the process of getting the finger painting. So, I tell him, once the finger painting is achieved, done, tell him to give us a revised timeline, so we can tell the board when things are gonna start. So, we should get started in the next two to three weeks, with then started fencing or whatever they're gonna do there in the field house.
Okay.
And some of the other projects, we're getting, again, the contract signed and the fingerprint, fingerprint is the one that usually takes two to three weeks, if they haven't done it yet.
I thought we said.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. That's all you have?
That's.
Yeah, I'm done, Andres.
Thank you, Andres. Moving on to item number nine, consent agenda, and I'll start on my left. If anybody has anything to pull or any questions on any of the items, Dr. Rodriguez?
I have none.
Isidoro?
No.
Oscar?
No, sir.
Andrew?
No, sir.
Mr. Kennedy?
No.
Okay. And I have none to, none to pull myself, so, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Patrick and a second by Andrew to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion carries. Dr. Canales, make sure we said there's a numerous donations and contributions, make sure that thank you letters go out, appreciation.
Will do, thank you.
Item number 10, discussion items. Item A, interim financial report for the six months ended February 28, 2018. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, for this section, we have Mr. Sanchez. And no action is required for this one.
Yes, on the financial report, on the general fund, which is the fund that we usually, I usually discuss with the board, we budgeted 172 million for revenues, we have received 105,886, that represents 61.53% through February 28. On the expenditures, we budgeted 172,911,000, we have spent or encumber 80,364,000, that is 46.48% of the budget. At the end of February is half of the year, so that's about 50%, so, we spent 46% only, so, we're doing good in, in that sense. We haven't, like I said, we're trying to be cautious on, on the budget. All the functions right now, the ones that are over a little bit, is transportation, food service, and co-curricular, and like I've explained before, transportation and food service, most of the expenditures come with the school year, so, when we get, at the end of May, the expenditures slow down, and so, so do the food service, and those, so, they'll start tapered off, the, the percentage will get better by the time they get to the school year. All the other ones are pretty much okay, so, right now, we're doing okay on the expenditures. Revenues and collections, we already collected 91% of the local revenues, most of it comes from the tax collections, so, right now, we're doing okay through February 28. Any questions on that?
On the transportation, you said they were a little bit over, over.
Yeah, right now, they're at 65%.
However, you had, you did cut their budget last year, or this?
Yes, no, the budget is okay, that's not a problem.
So, you might have to adjust it up if, for next year, possibly?
No, if, if we expect to have more enrollment, we need more bus drivers, then we'll increase that.
Okay.
One item that we'd like to have is more buses, when we get to a loan, we're working on a loan for that.
Andres.
Who might increase buses? Yes, sir.
And I, you know, again, I asked you the last time when you said we cut their budget, but out of, out of their bill, does this go as far as the maintenance and repairs of any of their buses?
It's, it's reflected in here.
It's also reflected here?
Yes. No, we, we did work, and we adjusted the budget, I got to go with Mr. Garcia and Mr. De La Rosa, and we worked on the budget to increase it from the.
I know we still have a few of the older buses, and, and maybe we can find budget money to get a couple more, Dr. Canales, so that we can maybe have those older ones as standbys, and, again, increase our enrollment, would be great.
Yes.
Can you get us, on, on our, our buses, a, a, the years, age, age of our year, of our buses? That way, we can, I know that, that we, we say they're getting old, but how old are they? An update.
And then, yeah, we can look at the cost of new ones, too, and the replacement benefit of any old, old, old ones as well.
Okay. Any to add?
Okay. Item B, acknowledge, acknowledgement of Hidalgo County Tax Office collection report for January 2018, current taxes and delinquent taxes.
Board of Trustees, the tax collections report for January, which includes the tax adjustments, was received from the Hidalgo County Tax Office on Tuesday, February 20, 2018, so, at this point, Mr. Sanchez will highlight the collections on this one.
Yes. For item 10B, the collection report for January, for current taxes collected, where, to date, through January, was 21,34,000, that represents 79.86%. The prior year, we collected 81.24%, this is through January, so, that was 1.28% less collections on the current taxes. On the prior year taxes, we collected 541,782, and that represents 13.11%, the year before was 12.79, which is 0.32% higher than the prior year through January. Any questions on the January report?
Looks good.
Okay, on item, can I go to item C now?
Okay, February.
Not only of Hidalgo County Tax Office collection report for February 2018, current taxes and delinquent taxes.
And so, here's where we at, at the end of February, Mr. Sanchez.
Yes, yeah, we got this report last week on Wednesday, they emailed to us. The current taxes we collected through February 28, 22,910,000, that is 87.15%. The prior year was 87.03, so, that's, in essence, 0.12% higher than the prior year. This is the reason that local revenues that I mentioned in the financial report that was 91%. The most, the biggest item is property tax collection. You know, the prior year levy collections were 644,000, which is 15.63%. The prior year was 15.28, that is 0.35% higher than the prior year. Any questions on that one?
Nope.
Okay.
Again, that's information purposes, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Thank you. Okay, move on to item 11, discussion and possible action items. A, discussion and possible action for the board to approve the memorandum of agreement between Rio Grande Valley linkage, linking economic and academic development, RGV lead, and the Westco Independent School District for the 2017-2018 school year. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, at the February 12 meeting, this item was pulled pending legal, for legal review, legal has reviewed it, and is okay with it. The total amount is 9,990, it's funded with KATE funds, it's the fifth year that the district does this, and it includes ninth and 12th graders at Westco East High School.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve by Andrew and a second by Dr. Rodriguez. Any discussion? And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item B, discussion and possible action for the board to approve the memorandum of understanding between South Texas College Continuing Education and the Westco Independent School District for the Community Health Worker Program. Dr. Canales.
Again, this is a partnership with STC, it's for Westco high school seniors enrolled in family and consumer service. Basically, the seniors will receive instruction, develop knowledge and skills to prep and service our community and the surrounding areas on trusted and knowledgeable information on nutrition, diabetes prevention, and health alternatives for wellness. It's funded by CTE. Right now, there's two students that'd like to be part of this, and the cost is 6.40, $6.40 per student.
I'll move to approve.
Second. It's a motion by Andrew and a second by Dr., I mean, by Mr. Kennedy. Is there any discussion? I think it's a great thing, especially with the diabetes and all the health concerns that we have down here, that's, the more kids we get into that, especially at $6 a year. Great thing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion carries. Item C, discussion and possible action for the board to approve the interlo, interlocal agreement between the City of Westco and the Westco Independent School District for improvements needed at the drainage detention easement located on the athletic field at Bigarza Middle School. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, thank you again for meeting with our city and talking about projects that need to be completed. We've been talking about this particular field, well, two fields, at Bigarza since November the 3rd, 2017. We have met with our city manager and city parks and recreation director, and we met with them on March 8th to go over. The MOU has been reviewed by legal, and we're ready to move forward, the city will reimburse us $60,000. It will make the two fields at Bigarza Middle School, yay, Mr. Garlick, one of them U I L ready for football and soccer, so, be play-ready, and the other one for practice, and it's been a couple of years since we've been waiting for this.
So, move.
I'll move to approve. I'll second. Oscar, I'm gonna let the, that's fine. Isidoro seconded, as he's, so, I have a motion by Andrew and a second by Isidoro to approve the memorandum of settlement in Westco, and on the athletic field, for the improvements at the athletic field at Bigarza Middle School. Is there any further discussion?
It'll be finished before school starts, or?
It's.
Before the football season, Coach Dragus?
It would take how long, Coach?
Good afternoon, this, we hope, we're really just depending on the grass and the weather, but I think that, I really feel pretty comfortable that we will have it ready by the start of football season, yes, sir.
Okay, great.
Good, good, all right.
No more lake.
Good weather, right?
Good weather.
No more lakes.
Rain dance.
Any further discussion? If there being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion carries. Item D, discussion and possible action for the board to approve the interlocal agreement between the City of Westco and the Westco Independent School District for the use of the playgrounds at Keller Health Elementary and Memorial Elementary after school hours and under the direction of the City of Westco Parks and Recreation. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, on January 9th, 2018, when we had the workshop, joint workshop with the city, this item was discussed, it's been through some revisions, we've had legal look at the MOU, we've, Mr. Gilad has talked to the principals about it, originally, we did have some concerns that we added to the MOU. Number one, that the, the, the use would be solely the field areas and the pavilion, not the playground areas that are rubberized, or they have some type of surface, and you recall, we had to replace, replace the one at FDR that cost about 90,000, so, it's for the field areas. Police presence in the area after hours was put into the MOU, along with the city agreeing to, in addition to security, to also reimburse us for any damage, any graffiti that may happen. The city would like to try it out, see what happens, and is very open to discussion. As I mentioned earlier, we met with our city manager and a, our parks and recreation director before spring break, very willing to have a go and modify whatever may be needed.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. We have a motion by Andrew and a second by Oscar to approve the memorandum of understanding for the use of the playgrounds at Keller Health Elementary and Memorial Elementary after school hours and under the direction of the City of Westco Parks and Recreation. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Couple of things, go ahead, Andrew.
Board of Trustees, on January 9th, 2018, when we had the workshop, joint workshop with the city, this item was discussed. It's been through some revisions. We've had legal look at the MOU. We've, Mr. Giladis talked to the principals about it. Originally, we did have some concerns that we added to the MOU. Number one, that the, the use would be solely the field areas and the pavilion, not the playground areas that are rubberized or they have some type of surface. And you recall, we had to replace, replace the one at FDR that cost about $90,000. So it's for the field areas. Police presence in the area after hours was put into the MOU. Along with the city agreeing to, in addition to security, to also reimburse us for any damage, any graffiti that may happen. The city would like to try it out, see what happens, and is very open to discussion. As I mentioned earlier, we met with our city manager and our parks and recreation director before spring break. Very willing to have a go and modify whatever may be needed.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. We have a motion by Andrew and a second by Oscar to approve the Memorandum of Understanding for the Use of the Playgrounds at Cleckler Health Elementary and Memorial Elementary after school hours and under the direction of the City of Westco Parks and Recreation. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Couple of things. Go ahead, Andrew.
Just to touch on what we had presented earlier by Coach Frampton. And I understand his concerns, and I think y'all have done a wonderful job with the, with Legal taking a look at how the city will be responsible for any of the mishaps that may happen, whether they tear up or vandalize any of our equipment. To lead on to that, although it's his classroom, and I understand that, being a PE teacher myself, however, we can't just say these are the only parks. You know, we have a lot of students on the north side of our, of our district that don't have a park to reach to. And thank you, Ms. Van Dever, and thank you, Ms. Hellman, for opening your doors to these students of our community. Although it may look bad for some when you're within the district, but I think overall, the families will get to use our facilities, and I think we're here for all students in our community. So, to the rest of the board, thank you for, for bringing this ahead and moving along with the city.
And I think those are very good points. My only concern is supervision of the area, of course, and then the equipment that they have, that sometimes they do leave it under the canopy area and to make sure that, because, yes, they will replace it, but they won't replace it within, say, 30 days. You have to get a PO and so forth. They're just gonna replace it the following day. I think then the principals would be fine, but I think a lot of times, I don't know, I know when I pass by Memorial, there's a lot of equipment out there. I don't know where over at, what was the other school?
Cleckler.
There's a lot of equipment over there too. And I think, I think as principals, I think that's their main concern. The use of the facility, the grass area, I don't think that's a problem.
It'll take 10 minutes, Coach, to roll it in. Most of the stuff is on rollers now. And I think if we just allow our teachers to give them those extra time to take in the equipment, at least that's my understanding. I think we're okay. In 30 days, I think we have enough equipment in some of these schools that can get us by at least 30 days if that's what it takes to replace.
Along with the equipment, you know, but you know, what about, you know, glass containers? Needles, do you even think worst-case scenario? You know, it's, you know, some of our kids, you know, are we gonna, are we gonna be doing walkthroughs? You know, at the beginning of the, you know, the day, you know, checking for that.
I'm looking at staff, they're saying yes, yes. I mean, we, it's something, you know, different. We, it's a field areas with access to the pavilion, I believe the basketball court area, right? And we'll be fenced and secured from the rest of the building. It's things that we will be looking for. The, the great thing is, I think y'all have done a great job and opened up the communication, the partnerships with the city that I don't have any doubt that they're willing to just sit, if any problems that we do have, to just sit with on a regular basis to talk and try to problem solve, you know, in good faith effort to provide the best for the students of Westco ISD. And when they go home, you know, they're part of the community. So, but we'll be monitoring it.
So, who's gonna be using the, those fields, or the public, or?
Yeah, it would, it would be, it would be open to the public, the field areas. And from certain, from certain hours, like in the Monday through Friday, it will be from 6:15 to 8:45, okay? During the weekends, it would be, and on summers, it'd be from 7:00 to 7:00, 7:00 in the morning to 7:00 in the afternoon. The city would have some responsibility, will big responsibility for, through the Parks and Recreation Department for opening and locking in the hours when our staff is not in session and does want the feedback if there's anything not working to our satisfaction.
Now, what was the reason for Memorial, since we have a park right next door?
I think it was just more space for, what I understand was more space for, staff, feel free to add, more space for organized sports and types of activities in that area. So accessing the field, they'll be moving the gate, they said, because there's a gate that accesses Memorial closer to the playground areas. But so they're not gonna use the playground equipment, they'll move the gate back, I guess, to the north, so that they can access the fields.
The playground, okay, won't be accessible?
No, not the playground with a, with a rubberized surface.
Okay, it's just gonna be a, a field.
It's a field area, the pavilion.
The pavilion there, is that correct? Yes, I think that's what, that's why they wanted to open it up, the pavilion for the basketball, you know. But I mean, I guess, you know, when we go forward with this, if it passes, you know, I would like maybe for somebody to get with the city, when they go and lock the doors, maybe do a walkthrough and make sure that there's nothing broken, glasses, or, you know, I mean, nothing left over, you know, so that they can check it out before they lock it up, and then us in the morning, somebody can just go and visually make sure that there's nothing there that's gonna harm any kids.
Is this something we can opt out of at any, at any point there?
Yeah, I think what, what I was gonna mention was that, was I think the public should know the two things. One is that this is a very limited program. It's gonna be two schools only, Memorial and Cleckler Health. So consider it a pilot program. If it goes well, we can expand it. If it doesn't, we can close it down. And then to address the doctor's point, the agreement says that we can terminate this upon 30 days. So if after a month, we find one of our schools trash, we can close it down on 30 days, and that's it. I'm very much in support of this also, due to the fact that the city is working very, very closely with us at this point. As a matter of fact, I believe that over this spring break, they fixed one of our roads, is that correct?
Yes.
They paved the entrance to Westco East.
The entrance to East High School was, was fixed by the city. They're providing the equipment and the labor, and we're paying for the materials only. So that is a big savings and a great cooperation on, on the side of the city. And, and in turn, they, they wanna, they wanna use our playgrounds. One concern that I do have, that, is that there was some talk about fencing going up at the schools to keep the public where they need to be and out of where they don't need to be. Is that gonna get done by our, our workforces or by the city's workforces?
Right, that is addressed in the MOU. And what it basically says, that they'll stall any improvements for security as required by the school.
Okay.
The plans and specs shall show approximate locations, the type of fencing, et cetera. The city shall conduct monthly meetings with the district during the construction process. Prior to the installation of fencing, it says, the city should certify to the district that the city has inspected the parcel and is familiar with the present conditions and agrees to accept it in such condition. So, and the city agrees to complete the installation of the fencing within the 90 days of the agreement.
Okay, and nobody, it won't be open until the fencing's done? Is that correct?
We have to establish the effective date and the areas that we still do need the fencing, which I don't remember from the plans.
The fencing that's up currently will separate the padded areas and the playground areas is already up. So there will not be any additional fencing. What they're gonna do is they're gonna move, the city will move a gate, a swing gate farther down so they, so the public can access the open field area from, from border, from the, from Hardin Block Park. That's the only thing that the city's gonna do is just make a swing gate, as of this time. But this, the playground areas are already, the fencing's already up, it's already secured.
And parking, they'll, they'll be utilizing the school parking?
The city, city parking.
At, at the memorial.
At Cleckler Health, they'll probably utilize the one on West Gate, the parking that faces West Gate.
Yes.
Well, what I ask for, from the administration is that if, as soon as we become aware that there's a safety concern or our property gets heavily vandalized, I'd like to know as soon as possible so we can take immediate action on that.
I agree there.
We can do that. And our principals, I'm sure you're gonna be looking at it very carefully, letting us know if it's working or not working.
Well, I know that the principals know some of the board members, so will you all let us know if something's definitely something happening? So don't, don't hold back, and, and I'm hoping that this all works out fine and that our public, you know, is, is careful with the equipment and, and then we can continue this partnership. And like Mr. Kennedy said, you know, maybe we can open up some more, some more playgrounds and more, more facilities for, for our public to use. I mean, it, it does belong to our public, everything that's out there, so it's only right that they should be able to use it. However, we are a school, and our priority is our kids, so, and protecting their, their interests.
And the current two principals are in agreement, correct? Okay.
Yeah, we've had discussions, and they've been very, it's great to collaborate with them, wanting to do in some of the same concerns. And then talking about a process that makes it work and a way to address concerns. And we modified the MOU with, with their feedback, so thank you.
And principals, please bring it to, to somebody, to our superintendent's attention. If there is a fence needed, that y'all feel that there's a fence need to keep them out of an area or do something, or to protect something, that way, we can get the city people to, to take care of it, or our forces to take care of it. That way, this can go off just smooth, as smooth as it can. You know, again, the city's doing a lot of things. There, there is, I think, upcoming another MOU where the city is going to work with us and fix some more of our, of our roads that lead into our schools. So, that's, that's a great cooperation with our, with our, with our city. And thank our mayor also. Anyway, moving on to item E. We haven't voted on them. Did we?
We have a motion.
Just a motion.
Alright. Thank you, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion by Andrew and a second by Oscar. Is there any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. That's the first time I've ever done that. Probably not the last. E, Discussion and Possible Action for the Board to Approve the Interlokal Agreement between the City of Westco and the Westco Independent School District to Address Parking Lot Repairs Needed at District Campus Location Throughout the District. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, this was another discussion of the January 9th Board-City Workshop. The city at that time mentioned completing this one project, the paving the 8th Street on the west side of Westco East High School over spring break. You know, many thanks to our mayor, our city manager, the commissioners, they got it done. So it's done, and I've talked to people. They're excited about traveling that road now. In addition to that, the purpose of this MOU, though, is to address other parking lot needs in our district and on our campuses. So this MOU has also been reviewed by Legal. The City of Westco would assist us in undertaking the repairs at four sites, right? Four different parking lots, as then we believe we both will benefit from this by decreasing the cost of services, increasing the quality of life for both the citizens, you know, of the district and the city.
I want to approve.
So move.
As we have, again, we have a motion by Andrew and a second by Isidoro to approve the interlocal agreement between Westco Independent School District and the City of Westco to address parking lot repairs needed at district campuses located throughout this district. Is there any discussion?
Dr. Canales, you mentioned for parking lots?
Right, according to the, the paving and the overlay, we have to provide them a prioritized list by July 1st, 2018. And they would begin the paving of no less than two of the parking lot projects in their schedule beginning their fiscal year, which is October 2018.
Okay. And again, we're using, the city is paving it, and we are providing the materials?
Yes, we'd help provide for the materials.
Yeah, well, they will provide, and then we'll reimburse them for it. We're just paying for it. We don't have to do, really don't have to do anything other than let them do the job. And now, Doctor, I know I was in on that meeting now. I know that they started with four projects, but I believe that we're gonna be able to add more as time goes on?
We, according to the MOU, it's four, and it's four parking spaces. For example, Westco, one of the high schools may have one or two parking spaces. You know, parking lots, like a student and a staff, it's a student's, it counts as ones. If it's a staff, it counts as two. So for initially, it's for four, it's for four. Any other information on the MOU?
One thing I've noticed is that on section 2-2, it says that we're, we're supposed to provide to the city a list of priorities, I guess, create a list of the parking lots we want fixed and submit that to them by July 1st, 2018. Who is gonna prioritize that list? Is it gonna be the board or administration?
We, Mr. Medical, this has started looking at in terms of, we could establish some parameters. I mean, you will have your input in it. So we've started looking at some, we have a list, it's longer than four, but it was some input, but currently, we looked at traffic, the amount of traffic in the area. We looked at the, I don't know what you call it, the depth of the potholes and the circumference of the potholes and.
Yeah, primarily, we get most of the problems on the, on the high-traffic, I guess, drives and parking spaces or parking lots on our schools. One of the, the ones that has major damage is at the high school, that drop-off area. And there's, we get a lot of calls, so we base it on the number of calls in our assessment once we go out and try to patch the potholes as well. So that's how we prioritize the campuses.
So going, going back to Mr. Lopez's question, so let's say they, they do the high school parking lot, that comes off the list. Are we able to add one to continue to have four?
It was my understanding, when we discussed it, that there would be, that they would take four, four districts at a time. I don't know if this memo limits it to four and whether we will be able to add to it. I think that's something that we can look at, of course, and. It limits it to four. And, and I think that.
For this, for that fiscal year.
Yeah, for fiscal year. In discussion, in discussing with them, I think we need to possibly, I mean, I know that we can do it again next year.
Right.
Okay.
So it would be four for the, for their fiscal year, which begins October 1st, 2018.
Right, and, and again, we are asking for their help, because we, we do need a lot. We, we have a lot of needs at a lot of our campuses and properties. And they in turn are asking us for their need, and that is our park, or our pavilion area and our grass area. So again, in working with the commission, I think they're meeting tonight as well to go over their MOUs on their commission meeting, and so again, depending how we vote, but I wanna thank the board if we continue to move forward, working with our city.
And we can, if I may add, we continue to monitor the parking lots as, as we get the calls. And depending on the weather, because the weather's a major factor, contributor to the breakdown of the asphalt. So we start looking at the wear and tear on the, on the parking lots and start putting them on the list as well.
Now, the first project wouldn't be until October?
We already, East High School's already done the drive.
Parking lots wouldn't be till October?
Well, and depending on the allowed time, probably it's in the summer, definitely in the summer, we would have time, or the city would have time to get in there and be able to, to barricade the area, block it off, and section it off, and then, and then work that way.
Let's make sure we take advantage of the, of the summer and not let another summer go by and.
Just for reference, that, that project, it took about four days or so on the spring break, they finished it. So that kinda gives us a timeframe as, as to how much they can do in four days. So they would need more time to do, you know, bigger areas.
Because it's my understanding that they're gonna work it into their schedule, so they, they still, you know, so if, if they're, if according to their schedule, if our projects are, you know, in October, you know, let's, let's see what we can do ourselves, at least, you know, during the summer months, to make sure we take advantage of that downtime.
Right.
According to the MOU.
The MOU says that, that it'll get worked into the city's normal paving schedule, so our priorities will have to fit within the city's priorities.
It's a great thing. I mean, this is a great help for the district, a lot, a big savings. And the benefits go to our public, our parents, and our students, you know. Great, it's a good, good deal. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item F, Discussion and Possible Action for the Board to Approve the Revision to Local Policy FDA to designate WISD as an Open Enrollment District. Dr. Canales.
Second.
I have a motion by Patrick and a second by Andrew to approve the revision to Policy FDA designating Westco ISD as an Open Enrollment District. Any discussion?
Thank you, Dr. Canales, for bringing this to the board. I've been asking this question since I've been on the board as to why we're not, and now we're here moving forward. So thank you, and your staff.
Welcome.
Okay. Basically, what this is gonna, what this is gonna do is allow students to move to our district, to come into our district. Right now, there are some restrictions that prevent some students from coming in, right? But this will undo those restrictions.
Correct, your point.
Now, what procedures do we have in place if there's discipline issues with some of those students?
The laws changed recently on that. If, if you accept a transfer, a district transfer, you have to keep the child for the year. That's one change. We, our application process is being developed with feedback from, from, we presented to the DAC on February 26, 2018, got feedback from them about ideas and what do you, you know, what are some, you know, what are the pros and what are the cons? And what do you see? So we got that feedback. We got some principal feedback. So we'll have to develop the application. We're looking at applications from other districts. There is something in there about behavior attendance and grades. There'll be something. The committee, I think the feedback from the principals was, can we be included in the committee if they want to come to our school? So we'll include that. But once we accept them, we keep them for, for the year. That's my understanding of the current law. We'll double-check that to make sure.
That sounds fine. This is gonna be a great idea.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item G, Discussion and Possible Action for the Board to Consider, one, Approval of Administration's Recommendation for the Writing of Proposal Received for the Construction of the Pavilions at Mary Hope Middle School and Cuero Middle School and Restrooms and Canopy at Central Middle School. And, number two, to authorize administration to enter into contract negotiations and approve contracts for this project. CSP number 18-03-19. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, in February 13th of 2017, you approved the project on March 9th, 2017. Board of trustees, in February thirteenth of twenty seventeen, you approved the project. On March ninth, twenty seventeen, you approved the hiring of Alvarado Architects and Associates to design the plans. And on September eleventh, twenty seventeen, you approved the following, the CSP competitive seal proposal, method of construction, you delegated to administration the ranking, and you approved the criterion points. Uh, we did receive nine proposals. The, uh, recommendation for administration is it Rigney Construction from Edinburgh, Texas for a project cost of one million, one hundred and thirty thousand. It was the first ranked with five hundred ninety-four, uh, points awarded. It's not the lowest. The lowest, uh, was ranked as the very, very end, as you can see on the second page of this, with old, with four hundred and two points. So using the criteria that was approved, we are recommending, uh, Rigney Construction.
So move.
Second.
A motion by Isidoro and a second by Patrick to approve Rigney Construction for the construction of, uh, pavilions at Mary Hope Middle School, Cuadre Middle School and the restrooms and canopy at Central Middle School. Is that all we're doing?
You're, uh, what's...
You're, you're approving the ranking?
The ranking recommendations?
And so that's the first step, and then the second step will be...
Okay, so we're approving the, uh, the motion is to approve the ranking and to accept the recommendation to go with the Rigney Construction.
Right, and so administration can start.
And I'm gonna say also to approve administration to negotiate the contract as well.
Right, that's the second part.
Okay, and now, and also to let administration...
Start negotiations.
Start negotiations.
Contractor.
And approve the contract, right.
To approve the contract, okay.
I guess one, my one question would be, why was the low bid ranked last?
The company is a utility company.
It's a what?
It's a utility company.
Oh.
They don't do, they didn't provide any references of projects done like pavilions that we wanted. You look at the page, page three in the agenda item, they had, uh, only three projects listed. None of them were similar. The other companies had ten projects or more. They were missing information on the safety record and on the subcontractors. Those are some of the criteria that we had for approval.
Okay.
That is why they came out on the bottom.
That sounds fine.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item H, discussion and possible action for the board to consider, one, approval of administration's recommendation for the ranking of the proposals received for the construction of the building improvement project for the advanced manufacturing technology shop at Joe Calviou Kate Complex and the welding woodworking shop at Peter Brigo Ag Farm Complex. And number two, to authorize administration to enter into contract negotiations and approve a contract for this project. CSP one eight dash zero three dash two zero. Dr. Canales.
Board of trustees, uh, we received five proposals for this one. We are recommending NM Contracting LLC from McAllen, Texas. Their project cost is six hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred. It is the lowest bid by about a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars and it was ranked first by the committee. And so we recommend that the board, that you approve our ranking recommendation for the proposals received for the advanced manufacturing technology shop at the Kate Complex, the welding and woodworking shop at the Ag Farm Complex, and for administration to start negotiations with the contractor ranked number one, NM Contracting LLC. Oh, and this is also about eighty thousand dollars less than we estimated.
Lowest bid, correct?
Lowest bid. It was the lowest bid first ranked.
So move.
Lowest bid by about a hundred and eighteen thousand.
So move.
Second.
A motion by Isidoro and a second by Dr. Rodriguez to approve the administration's recommendation for the ranking proposal received for the construction of the building improvements, projects, and, uh, also to enter into negotiations and approve a contract for this project. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Canales, what was, uh, the cost estimate we had?
Uh, including architect fees was eight hundred and forty thousand.
What about on the previous, on the pavilions?
Um, that, that one, the budget was a million, two hundred thousand. So including architect fees, we're gonna about break even on that one.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item I, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of the administration's recommendation for the financing of the new digital scoreboard for Bobby Lackey Stadium. Dr. Canales.
Board of trustees, I know that Mr. Sanchez's department, along with Co. Trillas, have been working diligently on this one. We do have an update for this one.
Yes, uh, we provided the agenda to the board. We had listed that. We had not received the information from the, one of the companies and we still haven't received it. We, we had asked them for a copy of the lease agreement that they were offering so that we could have legal counsel review it. And, uh, all I got was information on the, the rates they would give us. They were giving us two options. Today they gave us three options on how we could finance, uh, the project. So at this time, we don't have anything to present to the board. We'd like to ask that we have, we could have a special meeting sometime next week. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, so that, that, they're supposed to be sending me the information tomorrow. I discussed it with them, what we wanted to do, but they said, well, we'd like to know what option you're gonna choose so we could send you the report. I said, I need to know the agreement you're gonna give us to make sure that it meets the tax exempt option for the financing. Because if we want to finance, uh, more roofing in the future, there's a limitation on how much we can borrow after we do this. For example, we cannot issue any more maintenance taxes in excess of ten million dollars. The roof we needed were at least eleven million. So that's, uh, concerns with that. So the bank counselor, Mr. David Mendez, was wanting to see the, the agreement they wanted to propose and we never got it.
So do you want to table this or...
Right now, we'd like for the board to table it and so we can have hopefully a meeting next week.
I'll move the table aside.
Second.
There's a motion and a se- motion by Patrick and a second by, uh, Andrew to table the item, which, uh, is to consider the approval of administration's recommendation for the financing of the new digital scoreboard for Bobby Lackey Stadium. Is there any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, this item has been tabled for later discuss, later. Item J, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approve, consider approve of the design development phase for the Wesco East High School band hall addition project.
Board of trustees, staff has been working hard on this one. We do have Yarrow Architect's staff here. Will make a presentation to the board. Uh, this again, this is for the design development phase. So we're getting ready to begin construction a little bit closer. And as far we're waiting for that to set up, if, um, this gets approved tonight, we do have a timeline that shows an anticipated completion date of November twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen. So we will start the school year.
Good afternoon, uh, uh, Dr. Canales, board members. This is, uh, a little bit after. Uh, tonight, we're, uh, venturing into the DD, uh, design here for Wesco East, the band hall. You can see it's a partial rendering of the, uh, actual entrance of the project. You'll see also a bird's eye view of the location that it will be located, uh, just immediately north of your existing band hall at that location. You'll see the green area there as well and the proposed new band hall location. Here we'll have a depen- uh, department legend with the footprint associated to that. In the blue, you'll notice that'll be the rehearsal, practice locations and a lot of the, uh, self-motivated practice locations as well, the back to the, this area on the, on the eastern side. And then you'll see the offices as well and the, uh, closets and auxiliary, uh, locations for all the equipment that, uh, will be utilized for the band. Here you'll see a final, uh, layout footprint that the board, I mean, not the board, I'm sorry, but the, uh, your staff has been working with us and trying to make sure that we give them the ultimate, uh, uh, space that they need and pretty much buttoned up. Uh, we've worked, uh, beyond that already, uh, and, uh, this is the end result on that to date. Again, you'll see another rendering of the, uh, location, looking towards the, uh, northwest area. Looking towards the northwest, of course, that would be the entrance there. Uh, and that's pretty... But what we have here is, and, and the reason we're, we're going beyond this now is because we're at the ninety percent CD stage today. Uh, we've already submitted that information to your staff, uh, and, uh, we're progressing as we go. We've provided the exterior finishes with all the palettes and the colors for selections and for final approval so we can go ahead and introduce them finally into the, uh, finishes and move forward and get the items compiled and put it out in the streets as well. And I think our target date is gonna be met for April ninth, I believe. That we're looking to put this thing out in the streets, uh, for contractors to provide proposals on this. And I believe we've approved already... Yeah, CSP. So here you'll see the interior palettes as well. I believe all the colors have been selected.
If you can get closer to the mic because we can't hear you.
Trying to. But you'll see that's, all the colors have been introduced as well. Uh, I know there's only one color that the, uh, the district is ax- asking for us to go ahead and impose into the, uh, design and the finishes. And I think they're wanting to put some accent colors in s- in some of the offices so it won't look just regular. Uh, so we'll toss it up there as well for them. And we've been talking to a medical in regards to that. So I think we're gonna get that buttoned up and whatnot. So as soon as we get, uh, a defined thumbs up on all this, we're good to go. Finish up everything on the finishes, compile the documents, get them back for final review again and put it out in the streets. Scott Willie.
Very nice, very nice. I know that, um, we've been waiting for this for, for a while and, and, uh, we've been overcrowded on, on our band, both of our band, band areas in both of our high schools. Uh, we took care of that one of high school, uh, Wesco High a couple of years back. And East is, is very due for it and, uh, this is, they're gonna be very happy. I know our parents will appreciate this and they're gonna love it. Thank you very much. It looks very nice.
I'm not gonna be picky, but what happened to the green?
I thought we had picked another color.
Different color.
I'm just curious.
I'm just curious.
This is, this is the actual color that was selected.
The terracotta?
Yes. This is the actual color that was indicated to us to provide in the rendering. However, you have another, no, we don't have it. He doesn't have the color that you're...
No, no, I guess what was presented to us had, uh, your terracotta color was kind of...
It was a yellow one, yeah.
No, it was a greenish.
It was a yellowish.
Oh, the second one was green.
There was a yellow one.
Maybe the second one was a green.
Originally was yellow, then it went to a, uh...
First was yellow, second was green. Your cabinet or whoever voted was green, I believe.
Yeah.
And that was, came before us and kind of, you can at least pick up the grass that blends into the building. But Mr. Cuadre, Dr. Cantu, you okay with the blue and terracotta color? Because it's not black and silver the way the whole school is.
You know my school is not black and silver. We have all those colors represented outside the interior.
Y'all happy?
Very happy.
They're happy, I'm happy. It's their choice.
Yeah, we've worked concurrently with staff, sir, and trust me, we've gone back and forth.
Staff did look at this. You all did look at this today, right?
Right.
Like, okay.
The, um, the tile on the, uh, on the protruding part of the building, is that gonna be like a glossy kind of tile or, uh, matte?
You referring to this piece right here?
Oh, no, no, the, the, the big piece, the multicolored panel? Yes, sir.
Yeah, they're, they're metal panels, right?
Oh, they're metal.
No, those are the Nisha Hop panels and these are these colors right here.
Okay, so that's what it'll look like right there?
Yes. And if you don't mind, I'll...
Sure.
Because you mentioned a glossy finish.
It's a tile.
Thank you.
Is it like a tile?
Oh, it seems like a, more like a stone kind of color. Mind if I pass it down?
Sure.
Sure. Thank you.
Do you all look at the terracotta as well?
I don't like it.
This color is the... Oh, on the, oh, okay, I see.
I'm a Dallas Cowboy fan, so I like those other ones.
What is this made of?
Uh...
Good question.
President, this is, uh, Jose from Yarrow. Um, it's made out of, it's a fiber cement.
Okay.
It's almost like a stucco, but it's a, it's a panel.
It's a compressed panel. Yes.
Yes, ma'am, and the color retention is also a lot better than, than stuff.
Yeah, it requires less maintenance, uh, not having to go back and repaint every three years or four years.
So approving this tonight, how fast can we get a shovel in the, in the ground?
That's correct. So our intention as of now is to compile all, what we've already submitted to, uh, a medical and staff to do the final review. And then if there's any comments, we'll go back and address them and make all the remedial corrections that they think need to be done and that'd be fine. And then we compile all the documents and our goal is, I think, I believe, Andres, to hit the streets on the ninth of, uh, April?
Seventeenth.
The seventeenth, or we changed?
No, the ninth is the first advertisement, the paper?
Yes. That's what we consider hitting the streets for bidding.
April seventeenth?
No, nine, finish the construction documents. The fifteenth, first advertisement. Seventeenth, relieve the plant suspects, advertise and again on the twenty-second, pre-proposal meeting on the twenty-fourth, receive proposals on May second and present it to the board on the fourteenth, May, May fourteenth, which is the meeting in, in May. So the completion is to be made for November twenty-sixth.
I'll make a motion to approve based on administration's recommendations.
I'll second. I have a motion by Andrew and a second by Oscar to approve the design development phase for the Wesco East High School band hall addition. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you. You want me to... Thank you. Thank you very much.
For presenting.
Appreciate it.
Very, very nice. Are, do those stay here with us or do they go with you?
They stay here?
Are, are these gonna be left for our perusal? Are these, uh, examples gonna be left so we can look at them later?
We're gonna leave them here.
Okay.
Yeah, we're leaving them here so you guys can find line.
Well, I was gonna say, Dr. Cantu, I know you just said if you could have them, but, uh, maybe if, if you guys can part with it after we do here. So maybe, uh, the band members and, and the parents from Wesco East can, can see what their new band hall's gonna look at, look like in the, this coming year.
Thank you very much, your work. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. You know, one item I need to bring up is that we're paying, uh, for this project through loans, I believe. Is that correct, Andres?
No. Band hall coming from fund balance aside from facilities revenues. New construction is a fund balance.
From fund balance?
Yes.
And we're paying a hundred percent for the whole project?
Yeah, for the money that we have.
With the money that we have.
Right.
You know, and, and had we received the bond that, that we went out for, we would have to pay like twenty-five cents on the dollar.
Thirty-five now.
Thirty-five cents. That's all. Item K, thank you, Andres. Discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of the construction document phase for the improvements to the girls athletic facilities and boys athletic facilities at Wesco High School and Wesco East High School. Dr. Canales.
Okay, we do, okay. Okay, board of trustees, on March ninth, twenty seventeen, you approved PBK Architects from McAllen, San Antonio. We have Mr. Iglesias here who will make a short presentation. Before we move on with this. Is it ready?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, so there's three alternates. We had listed several alternates when we presented some estimated cost, um, early on. And so based on the, uh, option B that was selected, there's three alternates that we would like to include in the construction documents. So one of them is the new lockers. Right now, as part of the base bid, we're planning to reuse the existing lockers. So we still need to review which ones. Maybe we can refinish them if need be and reinstall. So we're asking, you know, to include an alternate to provide all new lockers since we're completely redoing the interior spaces for both of the field houses. Second alternate would be the sports flooring. We're including a basic sports flooring. And so this would be a premium sports flooring with an upgrade. And this would be similar to what is currently installed at Wesco East High School's field house. And so because of budget, we felt that because we're doing both schools simultaneously, we would have the, the basic sports flooring system as the base and then see what the alternate came in as for the premium. And then we can make a decision once we receive the bids. And then third is the roof at Wesco High School. So right now, there are some units that are gonna have to be, uh, removed and replaced. There are skylights that are gonna have to be eliminated since we're re- reconfiguring the interior space. And so to avoid having to do a patch and repair the roof system, we've figured it'd be best to do a roof recovery, which is basically an overlay. And the roof system would be similar to some of the roofing that has been, um, done on the campus, um, the last couple of years. So as far as schedule, I think we were looking at... So as far as schedule, I think we were looking at...
January twenty-eighth for the completion.
Yes, so January, the end of January, twenty nineteen for completion. And so we're looking to advertise either the twenty-fifth of March or April first the following week. We had a review with a medical earlier today, so we need to finalize some comments, so we can go ahead and get this out on the street, and we're figuring about four weeks of bedtime.
What's the total number of lockers that you all gonna...
So currently estimated, we have at Westco East about five hundred and thirty-four, and at Westco High School, three hundred and twenty-nine.
That'll be sufficient for both?
Yes, currently, yes. And I believe Westco East may have reduced a little bit.
Yes, sir. To answer your question, the numbers we've used by meeting with both Coach Salinas and Coach Burgett, and looking at the current numbers and also projecting in case there's a little bit of growth as well, so... Some of the kids, as you know, are in multi-sports.
Correct.
But we are not counting them double, so we have taken all that stuff into consideration. So the numbers that we've given Mr. Iglesias are very accurate, sir, as far as lockers are concerned.
These alternates put us over budget, though, don't they?
Possibly?
Yes, the initial budget that we had was four point six million, and we started going through the schematic design and the design development phase. It moved up to four point six. What we had is four point six. Adding this alternate would add five hundred and eighty-six thousand more to it.
So it'll be about five point two?
Yes. So it'll be five million, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one, the estimate that we have. So we're asking for the board, instead of putting a alternate, include them as part of the base bid, because we do need them. And we allocated money from the maintenance tax note for this, so we have enough funds to pay for it. This is part of the loan.
What's the difference on the base floor and the premium floor that you all...
It's a millimeter thickness and the performance, and so the premium floor is pretty much what is at Westco East Field House currently.
Okay.
And so just because of the square footage for both campuses, we were concerned with the cost, but if we're able to make it work to avoid having an alternate cost and include it part of the base bid, we'd probably get a better value, a better number.
Andres, what was the original budget for the band hall?
Four point six million.
And what are we...
I'm not sorry. The band hall?
The band hall.
The field house or the band hall?
Band hall.
Band hall.
At East.
Four point six.
And what did we approve? Because I know we adjusted it.
Five three?
Five point three? So we increased... I know we went over budget because we needed... There was a need.
All right, it's five point three.
Five point three?
Yes, sir.
Well, I don't wanna cut the girl short. Coach Burgett, Coach Salinas, y'all okay with all the changes? Andres, do you have the money?
Yes, sir, we have it.
I move to accept.
It is.
Second.
We have enough.
We can absorb this extra cost?
Yes, sir. On the money, when we allocated the loan at the beginning, we had allocated two hundred thousand for the CTE projects. In the end, we ended up moving it to the fund balance for facilities in the local fund.
Okay.
So we made some money there. We had other projects that we had that came in under value, like the fire alarm. Initially, we started with one point two million, then eight hundred, ended up being six hundred and forty thousand. So there was some money freed up in the loan, so we can use to cover this.
Okay, well, in that case, we're all right then.
Yes, we have it. We have the money.
Okay, then we shouldn't have a problem with this.
And it's a need.
It is a need. It is a need. Our kids deserve the best, especially a nice dressing room. Okay, so we have a motion by... Was that Andrew?
Yes, sir.
Andrew, a second by Sidoro. To approve the construction document phase for the improvements of the girls athletic facility and boys athletic facilities at Westco High School and Westco East High School. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no? Motion carries. Moving on to item number twelve, closed meetings to discuss. A, personnel matters. Texas Government Code five five one point zero seven four. One, employment of personnel. Two, resignations. Three, deliberation regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee. Texas Government Code five five one point zero seven four and five five one point zero seven one. Item A, evaluation of superintendent. B, consideration with attorney regarding... Consultation with attorney regarding A, pending contemplative litigation. B, a settlement offer, or C, a matter which is a duty of the attorney of the Westco SD under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with chapter five five one of Texas Government Code, Texas Government Code five five one point zero seven one. At this time, it is eight thirty-six, and this board is going into closed session. Thank you.
The time is ten fifty-eight, and this board is back in open session. I'll give a little time for that. I believe we need to change some tapes. And then we'll go. We're ready?
They're probably asleep.
They had two hours to change it.
Who's back there? Good? Okay, so it's... Item thirteen, reconvenant open meeting. A, item A, possible action necessary on items discussed in closed session. First, number one, employment of personnel. Dr. Canales.
Administration recommends that you approve the employment of personnel as discussed in closed session.
So move.
Second.
A motion by Andrew and a second by Sidoro to accept as presented in closed session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no? Motion carries. Item two, resignations. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, we recommend that you approve the resignations as discussed.
Second.
I have a motion by Andrew and a second to... By Dr. Rodriguez to accept the resignations as presented in closed session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no? Motion carries. Item number three, deliberation regarding appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline dismissal of a public officer or employee. Texas Government Code five five one point zero seven four and five five one point zero seven one. Item A is evaluation of superintendent.
I move to approve the evaluation of superintendent as discussed in closed session.
Second.
Motion by Patrick and a second by Sidoro to approve the evaluation of superintendent as presented in closed session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no? Motion carries. Item C, discussion and possible action on superintendent's contract.
I move to extend the superintendent's contract for one additional year through June thirtieth,